Thank you very much. This meeting is being televised by Chelmsford Telemedia. So, welcome to the nice meeting. We have a pretty full agenda, so we'll start with the minutes from our last meeting on May 7th.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 7th, 2019.
Second?
Okay. Any comments, corrections? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Five, zero. All right. So, no Chelmsford CHS representatives, so...
Oh, so it's going right to me.
There aren't good news.
How exciting. Okay, so I'm gonna start off with some administrative accolades and then continue from there. I have a full page, so we can get very excited. So, first, I wanted to give notice to Dr. Bayronavon. He just published his second book with Dr. Hillary Kreisberg, and it's called Adding Parents to the Equation. It's understanding your child's elementary school math. So, that's really exciting. He can give that as a resource for parents and work with teachers with that as well. He's also running, and I put it at each one of your tables, he runs a TED Ed club after school, just on his own. Students learn how to do TED Talks. So, they're doing a showcase on June 4th, and everyone's invited from three to four. If you'd like to come by, they'll be in Lecture Hall 1, which is down by the Science Wing downstairs, and they're doing different topics. So, each student's going to get up within this hour and talk about these different topics. So, if you have some time and you'd like to stop by, please feel free to. You get to see the new lecture hall work, too. It's nice in there. Kristy Willsey, our Fine and Performing Arts Coordinator, she has officially graduated, and she had a doctoral hooting out last Friday at UMass Lowell, and we want to congratulate Dr. Willsey for that accomplishment. And we have now two new APs that were hired. You may have read your email, both at Harrington and Center. So, we have Donna Oma Bono, who is a Harrington teacher, who's going to be the AP at Center, just to confuse you a little bit. And we have Karen Grabkowski, and she is from Lexington Public Schools, and she will be the AP at Harrington Elementary School. So, we're excited to have them come. They'll be coming to your next committee, so you can meet them. Our middle school students, as we speak, are in a competition for the Knowledge Bowl. So, they're up against Tewksbury and Lowell tonight. Last night, they came in at the end and were able to participate tonight. So, we're gonna get up-to-date texts. So, if something exciting happens, we'll be more than happy to stop the meeting and acknowledge it. We are finishing, we have already finished our ELA in our math and science at the middle school level. There's just some makeups that are happening. High school just started their math, so it'll be today and tomorrow. And what will be outstanding for MCAS is just the Science MCAS, which is June 4th, with makeups after that. So, we're happy that we've made it through our last testing season here, and we'll be looking forward to some of the results that come through. Center Elementary School is having their Memorial Day program this Friday, and also their students will be performing at the State House. Let me see. Oh, and last but not least, let's see, I've got everything in there. Okay, so the Rhode Island School of Design, RISD, if you've heard of it, they put an annual award. I guess it's been happening since 1984. And what they do is they look for noteworthy secondary schools to offer this award to. So, Chelmsford was obviously picked, and what they do is they give an award for visual arts. And this year, it was Chelmsford High School senior Autumn Bellin, and she's the recipient of the RISD Annual Arts Award. So, we're excited for her. And that's it for good news.
Okay. Anybody else have any good news?
Oh, you can bring up the Tammy. You have more details than I do.
So, I had the pleasure of attending the Tammy's this weekend, and we were at the Theater Arts for the musical. We're nominated for 14 awards, and we received four in the large school division, including for our incredible student orchestra. We got a featured actress. Part of it was our production. So, absolutely wonderful. It was, it was just a really good... The public, the speaker who came was worth every single minute of the attendance. So, good.
You do a nice job.
All right. Anybody else? Good?
Great.
Okay. All right. We're now to our public input part of our meeting. Anybody wanna come forward for public input? Okay. Seeing none. Moving on to new business.
All right. We do have a pretty good-sized agenda tonight, so we're gonna jump right into it. The first item, I'm gonna actually ask Joanna to walk you through. As you recall, just as way of reference, about three years ago, we changed our cleaning model in the schools to a kind of a hybrid model where we contract with cleaning companies to provide services, and the cleaning services in the evening, and we employ daytime custodian at each of the buildings to help us with the day-to-day operations and also to help us kind of watch and check in on the nighttime cleaning contractor. So, that had been in place for three years. We had put a bid out. This past spring, our three-year contracts were coming up with the vendors, and we re-advertised for bid, and Joanna will walk you through the results and the recommendations. Just as way of background, before she gets into that, one of the things that we wanted to do three years ago, which we're recommending you do again, is actually award the contracts to multiple vendors to keep some competition within the schools. Instead of awarding it to just one vendor, in the event that actually we're not kind of happy with that cleaning or there's difficulties, it's difficult to break away from one vendor when they have kind of a monopoly on all of our buildings. So, by actually having two or three contractors in the district working, it kind of helps to keep them honest and to keep them working, because they know, in the event that they can't fulfill their contract, there are other vendors already in the district who are working, and we can execute the contract clause to basically nullify it early and then re-award to someone else. So, that is what Joanna is gonna present to you this evening. I won't say anymore, in case you wanted to provide an overview, but we have some contract recommendations for your consideration.
Thank you. We had 10 vendors respond to our RFP. We had the non-price proposal and then the price proposal. We invited four of those vendors to come and present to us. We had a little committee who listened to their plan for cleaning our schools. And then, based on all of that review, we are making the following recommendation of these three proposers to be awarded a one-year contract for next school year, and then two additional one-year contract extensions for the following two years. For the elementary schools, the Westlands Community Ed Building and the Central Administration Building, we're recommending Advanced Maintenance Solutions, Inc., for the amount of $287,804.18. For the middle schools, we're recommending MP Building Services for $272,822. And for the high school, Dynamic Janitorial Cleaning, in the amount of $269,700. I talk about the line item in the budget for this. We do have enough funds in the fiscal '20 budget for these contracts, and actually will be slightly under the budgeted amount, which we will then, if we have any recommendations for other uses for this contracted services, we'll bring that to the committee in fiscal year '20. So, I have a suggested wording for a motion, and I'll turn it over to the chairman.
All right. I move to accept the base bids and award the contracted custodial cleaning services for Chelmsford Public Schools commencing on July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020, to the following three vendors. Advanced Maintenance Solutions, Inc., 46 Middlebury Lane, Beverly Mass., 01915, for the four elementary schools, the Community Education Building, and the Central Administration Offices, in the amount of $287,804,18. MP Building Services LLC, 11 Morgan Drive, Methuen, Mass., 01844, for the two middle schools, in the amount of $272,822. And Dynamic Janitorial Cleaning, Inc., 176 Main Street, Milford, Mass., 01757, for the Chelmsford High School, in the amount of $269,700.
Any seconds?
Two.
Two seconds.
Okay. Any questions people have on this?
Are we using any of these currently?
Yeah. So, the contractor, there's only one that's changing. So, the contractor at the high school is staying the same, which would be Dynamic. So, they've just completed a three-year contract, so they're recommended to continue with the high school. They've done a really nice job. The contractor that is advanced, who is doing the elementary schools, the four elementary schools, the com-ed building and the central office, is the same contractor. They currently have the contract for those schools, so they are staying. The contractor that is changing is the MP Building Services. We currently have S&amp;J, who's doing our two middle schools. They're not recommended for renewal, and MP Building Services is recommended to take the two middle schools. So, that's the only change over the current vendors.
The one that wasn't recommended, what was the, was it quality or was it money?
No. The whole review process, first you look at your non-price proposals and take a look and make sure everyone actually meets the specifications. Then you go to cost, and it was a cost issue, based on their bid.
Any other questions?
No, I don't. Good.
On the, on the extension, so would we renegotiate then the cost again if we were to offer? How does that work?
No. So, the way this is bid, it actually really gives us more control. So, they're awarded as one-year contracts with two option year renewals. So, they've already specified what the fees will be for years two and three, but they're executed based on our recommendation. So, again, it just kind of helps to keep the vendors honest. They know that they're working on a year-to-year contract. So, assuming they all do very well in the first year, we will then recommend to you that the contract be amended and they continue on for year two. And then, we evaluate them at the end of year two, and we recommend that they stay on for year three. It just gives more control to us, as opposed to just giving a flat three-year contract. In the event someone just isn't performing, it's easier to, again, just cut ties and move on to a different contractor, if you haven't committed long-term.
Question. When we bring on a new contractor, what do we do in terms of training about security in the buildings?
So, Brian Curley, who is our Facilities Director, will be responsible for basically kind of integrating them into the schools, meeting with the staff. He'll work with our HR office to make sure that everyone, you know, is core checked and background checked and has all of that information done. And then, he'll be the point of contact for the cleaning company to check in with the night crews. They're probably gonna have some kind of like an area supervisor who's in charge of the crews of the two schools. He'll have to work with them to really kind of acclimate them to the buildings, the, you know, even like emergency response protocols in the schools, in the event something happened after hours. He'll have to do that whole training program with them.
Do you?
Correct. And then, Brian Curley, who works for us, is their point of contact on like a day-to-day basis, if anything happens.
Okay. Thank you.
Just out of curiosity, and it's just 'cause it's been a while, how did this come in compared to the initial contracts we did? Was it kind of flat, or in terms of the overall cost? I'm just kind of wondering what we...
The original... Oh, the way it used to happen?
No, no, no. The original, when we first put this into place, what was the original cost? Do you remember?
Do you remember off the top you had?
You can come back with it later. It's fine. I'm just curious if it...
I, I have that. It's, overall, it did increase a little bit because wages are increasing.
Sure.
And that's the main thing, but it wasn't...
Do you remember what the difference between, say, year three of the current contract and year one is?
It was, it was less than, I'm gonna say, 8%.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you. That's fine.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. We'll vote. Al?
Aye.
Maria?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. So, just as a process issue, so we'll send these recommendations to Andy Ware, your attorney. He'll draft contracts for the three groups, and then hopefully we'll have those back by the June 4th meeting, so that you can sign them. We can then get the vendor to sign them, because we really just have about a month in transition. The nice part for all of these contractors, the two that we have who are continuing and then the one new, is they're gonna actually pick up a couple of weeks in June, because we're out of school early, to start their summer cleaning before the 4th. So, this should actually help us get into the buildings a little bit earlier for staff as they return next, at the end of the summer. Great. Thank you. Second item this evening, I'm going to share with Joanna. These are some FY '19 recommended budget transfers, and then I have some expenditures on the one-time funding that we talked about. So, Joanna, would you mind just walking through your first recommendation that doesn't have to do with the...
Yes. I'd like to request a new category within the transportation page of the budget book for foster transportation. When, when someone is in a foster situation and is, their foster home is in another community, they can still attend in the homeschool in Chelmsford. And we're capturing those costs to see if we are eligible for any reimbursement. We can do that now by pulling purchase orders and that if needed, but it would be easier for our reporting if I had a separate line just for foster transportation, similar to what we do with homeless transportation. So, I'm asking to just create this new line, and then, within the category, I'd like to move 14,000 of homeless transportation budget into this foster transportation budget, and so we can track it. And that's an estimate. It's difficult to estimate, because you really don't know what's gonna happen with these students and families.
Do you suggest a two-part motion, or should I do this all in one motion? Like, one to create the line and then...
I think the bigger issue here is just creating the line.
Okay.
Because within the line, the page of the budget itself...
Oh, it's in the same...
Is where this other money is.
Got it.
So, I don't think you necessarily need to vote to transfer the 14,000.
That's correct.
Joanna was just trying to kind of tell you how much she was moving in there.
Yeah, it's not out of... I got it. I make a motion to approve the request for a new account number within the 2019 local budget titled Foster Transportation.
Second?
Second. All right. Any questions?
Do we have a sense of how much that usually is per year?
We don't. I worked with Amy Reese to estimate this year, and I think I'm close, but you never know.
Okay. Thank you.
Donna? Are we gonna keep the homeless transportation line? We're gonna keep that, correct? Okay.
Yes.
So, we're just creating a new line.
That's right.
Yeah, we have to keep the homeless, because we have to report on that, too. We're trying to now just kind of further, I guess, separate out the different funding, just to make it easier to report.
And for foster care, do we co-share with DCF, or is that just on us?
We would like to.
So, we would like to. DCF is not there yet with funding. They have some funding primarily used for reimbursing a parent who, or a foster parent who transports a child, but they don't have enough funding from the state yet to do beyond that. So, that's why all the districts are working to report this in more detail to then help with the funding.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have the roll call on this one, or is this...
Yeah, this would be a roll call, because it's a creating an account.
All right. Al?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Just again, as, by way of background, so Joanna will implement this in the current fiscal '19 budget, so that we'll be able to segregate out those costs for our year-end report. And then, at one of the two meetings in June, this will be added to the fiscal '20 budget, and we'll actually be bringing in, because we've settled a couple of contracts, we'll be bringing in some modifications to that budget document, basically moving money out of the set aside for contract negotiations into the correct salary lines, so that when Joanna or her staff posts the budget in fiscal '20, it'll be as accurate as possible, instead of having to get into fiscal '20 and doing a transfer. So, this will be embedded within that fiscal '20 budget that comes to you for final approval, and we'll flag that for them, so that they can see the, see the line item where it was created. All right. So, the second part of this recommendation, as we talked at the last meeting, we had done, two meetings ago, the traditional third-quarter budget projection, a report. And then, Joanna had put together a budget projection for this year that basically looked at all of our available local funds, all of our revolving funds, to see exactly where we'd be coming at fiscal year end. And at that point in time, kind of the bigger number is if, based on excess revenue that we have within our budget, because some of our personnel and non-personnel lines are not fully expended, we're going to have projected approximately $750,000 available at year end. We want to use a portion of that money as set aside for circuit breaker funds. We were trying to move that available funding up to about $2.5 million. You know, it's at about 2.2 now, I believe. It would go up to about 2. And we think that's a very comfortable number to be carrying over from year to year. That was actually higher than we originally had targeted, so I'm very happy that we're able to do that. But that still puts us in a situation of actually needing and wanting to reallocate some money within the existing fiscal '19 budget to make some one-time purchases. Again, these aren't purchases that are gonna have recurring costs into fiscal '20. They're one-time expenses that are gonna hit '19, and we're not actually building this into the base budget for '20. So, that's why you don't see any recommendations for like salaries or services that are gonna carry over from the fiscal year. So, I'd like to walk you through this list here, and again, at this point in time, when you look at the totality of the budget in our spending, if we didn't make some expenditures at this point out of the local budget, a circuit breaker revolving fund at the end of the year would finish somewhere between 3 million and 3.1 million. So, what we're trying to do is actually make some expenditures to the local budget, so that there's less that actually is offset to circuit breaker at the end of the year. I know this sounds a little convoluted, but that's why you have approximately half a million dollars worth of purchases here, to bring that 3 million down to 2.5. This number's gonna continue to be refined as we go into June. And as I mentioned at the end of the memo, instead of additional one-time kind of purchases for '20, in the event that we want to spend down a little bit further in June, what I might do is just bring a recommendation for an expense such as our, like photocopiers. We know we're gonna need to buy photocopiers next year, because our contract is up this year. So, instead of making the payment on July 1st, the first day of the next fiscal year, we could purchase the photocopiers in June, the same machines. It's not, you know, excess machines that we're buying, but we could just process the payment against fiscal '19 funds and not '20. And then, that would actually open up a little bit of flexibility in the fiscal '20 budget. Where we had photocopies, we wouldn't have to spend on that, and you could reallocate, but you'd have more time to really kind of think about that. So, there won't be any additional recommendations for one-time purchases that aren't really tied to fiscal '20 needs going forward, but I want to just kind of walk you through this list of some of these recommendations with the rationale. So, at the top of the list, one of the systems that we're actually recommending replacing is at the high school in the wood shop. They have a dust collection system. Basically, when you're using all the different power tools and equipment, it creates a lot of, you know, sawdust and dust within the room. The dust collection system that they have is old antiquated and is actually broken down at this point. So, they're in need of replacing that system. If you, in the back parking lot of the high school, it's a giant, it almost looks like a little, not a building, but like it's a totally standalone system, just based on when it was actually purchased. So, to replace that system, we can actually take down that piece that's built outside the high school. It has a cost of about $16,000. So, our Department Chair for Science has gone out and gotten quotes for that. So, that's a recommendation that we feel we should make. If we weren't to make it now, we'd have to put that into our capital budget for next year and make that payment, make that purchase, because we can't have the wood shop not have dust collection. It gets, gets to be a little bit crazy. The second two line items actually relate to replacing the digital photography lab at the high school. The first line item is actually for the Macintosh mini computers themselves, if we want to outfit that lab with new computers. The photo lab, even though we're moving to Chromebooks in the district, a lot of the, the digital photography programs really run better on a Mac, so we're still gonna maintain that Mac lab, but this will allow us to do that. And the second line item is actually just the new monitors. They just happen to come from a different company, because we buy the Mac minis right through Apple, and the monitors, we just buy through CDW. So, that's a quote price for the monitors. But that will replace that entire lab for the students, which we think is certainly advantageous. Next, at Center School, if you notice when you go around to our schools, all of them on the exterior of the building have like a storage container. Most of them look like old cargo trucks. The one at Center School is far-reaching, beyond its useful life. So, they need that to be fixed. We have to have storage containers at the schools to store all of our outdoor equipment and gasoline and things like that. We can't store that within the buildings. So, that is the recommendation for a new storage container at Center. The other ones at this point in time are not in as bad a condition, so that's why this is an isolated recommendation for Center. Next, at Chelmsford High School, working with Katie Sims, our Health and Wellness PE Coordinator, we've added ropes courses and ropes elements at the elementary and the middle school level. We'd like to do that at the high school, so that the kids have the same access to the same type of equipment when they get up to the high school level. So, that is funding, and again, there are quotes that are behind it, to be able to support adding some low and high elements to have a ropes course at Chelmsford High School. That'll tie into the phys ed curriculum. Within our music room, let me step back for a second. So, I didn't come up with all these recommendations on my own. If you're just wondering why, we're kind of jumping around a little bit. Whenever we have budget decisions and whatnot, I go out and I work with the building principals. We've talked to all of our different department coordinators, and we ask them to bring forward recommendations from all the departments about what they potentially need as part of their programming to be replaced. So, as I'm doing this, you know, this is certainly input from the whole district in these decisions. I don't want you to wonder like, why am I going from a storage container, and all of a sudden now I'm talking about tubas? It's just because of the way the recommendations came from the various coordinators. But Kristy Whittlesley, Dr. Whittlesley, at this point, is recommending some musical instrument purchases for the middle school and the high school program. I was amazed at how expensive some of these instruments are, but there are several that just are in need of replacement, particularly based on the number of kids that we have.
So, based on some of the information that I've gotten from the Friends of Music, I guess there is quite a bit of equipments in disrepair, so I had asked them to reach out to you to see. But I was wondering at some point if maybe we could get a handle on some of the equipment that they have there, the instruments that are just sitting around because they need to be repaired or something, so...
Yeah. If you want, even over the summer, we could kind of put inventory together of what we currently have, and just what repaired it. They do have very good shops that they work with to repair the equipment.
Yes, they do. It's just expensive. It's expensive.
No, it is. But the district does put in money. I know the Friends spend money on it as well.
Right.
These are actually some brand-new instruments to add into the, the programming at the middle and the high school, various low brass instruments. Not being the music person myself, that's what they tell me. And so, that's why they have for you tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
But I can do that over the summer for you. Next, again, working with Peggy Gump, our Coordinator for Nursing, as we'll talk about a little bit later on tonight, we've spent a lot of energy and effort this year on our kind of Alice response protocols for emergency planning. Peggy has done a lot with our staff around training for CPR and Stop the Bleed. Every time we do a training, we have to borrow kind of the mannequins and the different materials from different departments. And we have a lot of staff that we're training in this, so we'd actually like to have our own equipment to be able to train on. So, Peggy has worked with the different vendors, and that's about a $4,500 recommendation for us to be able to have our own. We'll certainly share ours with other departments, if it's police, fire, whoever needs it, but we're always pulling from the other groups to be able to put our stuff together, and we'd really like to have our own setup of training equipment going forward. So, that's why that's recommended. At the CHIPS program, they have a need for an activity chair. As students with different physical needs kind of age, because they're, they're growing, they have needs for different-sized chairs. So, they currently have a low, high-low activity chair, but they have a student who's ready to move up to the next chair. And the chairs themselves are very expensive. They have put together the, this quote, working with their OT at the school, and that's about a $3,800 chair, not only for use for that one particular student, but any students that we may have that need that particular resource. We would then have on hand at, at the CHIPS program. You'll see, the next request is actually the same at all three of our elementary schools. This was their big request from Center, Byham, and Harrington. At the South Row, if you're over there for one of their different events, in their cafeteria some years back, I believe the PTO worked with them, and installed a really terrific video projection system with a sound system. They have movie nights, parent events and whatnot in the schools. I rather three schools don't have that. This actually came to light last fall. I didn't realize that they didn't have the same level of technology as the South Row did when we were doing our Alice videos. So, what we like to do is be able to provide the same type of setup at the other three elementary schools as we have at South Row. So, the vendor that did South Row's has come in and provided quotes for us. They'll be working with Bill and Technology, but all three of the schools had asked for that, for that same setup. So, so that is the recommendation there.
Does South Row need to be upgraded at all at this point?
I don't really think so, to be honest with you. It's an incredible system. I think we're, what they're putting in is very similar to what South Row already has. They seem like they were above the curve when that was actually installed. So, no, I think South Row's really in good shape at this point, and if we can bring the other three schools up to a similar setup as South Row, we'll be in, we'll be in good shape. I lumped this all together. Jo Morris, our Science Coordinator, had given me a number of different proposals to actually, at the middle school level primarily, add some additional equipment for our seventh and eighth grade science classes, different manipulatives and supplies that they need for our science in the middle schools. There were a couple of, I can share the list with you, but there were, there were a couple of pieces of equipment that they needed for the high school, too, that were just aging and needed to be replaced. But a lot of this is, again, it's kind of pricey, some of the equipment themselves, if it's a micro... But a lot of this is, again, it's kind of pricey, some of the equipment themselves, if it's a microscope or even, you know, beakers and things like that for some of the experiments that they're doing are a little bit pricey. But I lumped them all together and it's a little over a fourteen thousand dollar expenditure for, for that. The next three line items really relate to technology and a lot of our implementation on the one-on-one rollout for next year. So I've asked Bill and the different vendors to price out what it would cost to actually install the interactive classroom technology. Very similar to what we have in the fourth grade modules. I know you've all been to with the schools, the touchscreen TV with the Gorilla Glass that you can't break. One of the things that we're kind of looking at, if you think about it, our fourth grade classrooms all have that technology and it's used on a daily basis. It's very well received in the schools. So as we're implementing this one-on-one technology piece, we have fourth graders in the elementary schools who are used to using this technology every day, who right now are going to be going up to fifth grade classrooms that don't necessarily have this. So what we want to do is install that same classroom technology they have in the fourth grades, basically in the fifth grades. So per classroom, it's approximately thirty-eight hundred dollars to, to do that.
Thousand.
Excuse me?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Well, it's thirty-eight hundred per classroom. So we have eight core classrooms in each middle school for fifth grade and then most likely like a special at an ELL room. So that's where we come up with the ten classrooms for the fifth grade at both McCarthy and Parker. And then we've priced out about forty classrooms at the high school. The high school actually has some of the oldest technology in the district as far as interactive classroom technology goes. And they have more teachers, at the high school unfortunately, you don't have teachers that necessarily have five classrooms of all freshmen. But some might have a couple of freshman classes, a couple of sophomore, junior, senior classes. And again, if our eighth graders going up to the high school are going to be participating in this one-on-one initiative, we'd like their classrooms to be outfitted with this technology. And I actually think this is going to put us on a good trajectory to almost be in a four-year implementation and a refresh cycle. It's going to force us every year, if we have a little bit of extra money, to invest in updating another set of classrooms. So right now, our fourth grades will go up to the, the proper fifth grade classrooms with technology. We'll do sixth, we'll do seventh, we'll do eighth as we do the rollout. The high school will actually get down a little bit earlier if we can put extra projectors in. Again, if you think about the scale, it's not perfect. But if you have sixteen mainstream classrooms at the middle school level feeding the high school and we're going to try to do twice as many, we'll be able to make a bigger impact at the high school. And again, even the, the students who aren't freshmen participating in the one-on-one are going to have greater access to the carts because our freshmen are going to have the devices. So the carts will be able to be used more freely through the high school. There's a very good likelihood that other teachers who have this technology in the classroom will be able to use it for the other kids. And again, I think this will be nice to kind of put us on a four-year cycle to basically get through all the schools and keep our technology fresh. It is a good amount of money, but that's, that's where those numbers are coming from.
Is it okay to ask a question? Okay, so this is because I don't know the technology. Is this technology, what's the duplication between this technology and the Chromebooks?
So the Chromebook itself is like the laptop that the kids will have for the class. The interactive technology is similar to like, say, the TV on the wall. It's your projection station. It's a touchscreen. So the teacher might be manipulating, you know, their laptop up on the display panel for the students in the classroom. But then if they're using like a technology app with, with a touch feature, the students might actually go up to the, the screen and manipulate things on the screen. That's the technology that we're putting in. So they're getting the, the device, like this laptop with the one-on-one initiative. And that's being funded through the school choice funding. This kind of video projection equipment and like a sound tie-in would be this, what we'll call the integrated classroom technology.
Okay.
Can I step in for just a minute? Just also to give you an idea, teaching wise, that allows a teacher to be able to pull small groups, do small group instruction, or if you're doing a whole group instruction, they'll be able to model, let's say, you know, even if it was science, they'd be able to model it, kids can watch it, and then they get to do. Our goal for the one-to-one initiative is not to have the kids sitting in front of a screen all day long. And, you know, I understand what you're talking about, the duplication piece, but you do have to have both to be able to do small group and whole group instruction. And what Dr. Lang was saying is about some of the apps are interactive on that board, but they wouldn't be here. We didn't buy touch.
Right. I was going to say, there, there are apps where, you know, the teacher can put out a question and students can do a survey and the survey results will come out and she can, the teacher can then tell who's understanding.
The reason I'm asking that is because you talked about the fifth grade, which is already getting the one-on-one initiative, but you've got three whole grades without anything at all. So, and there's nothing out of this technology going into those rooms, right?
Correct.
And I wouldn't say they don't have anything because when, the fifth grade, right. Well, when the fifth grade and the ninth grade get Chromebooks, that's going to open up the other carts availability. And those teachers do still have a projection system, a sound system. It's not the new upgraded ones. It's the original ones that went in. So it's, this takes time because clearly the expenses, you know, there. It would be great to put them all in, but that will open up a lot more of the ability for the other teachers to access those Chromebooks that the fifth grade and ninth grade witness.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's not that the, say, sixth through eighth grade students won't have any technology in their classrooms. If we have to start replacing and upgrading the technology though, instead of, you know, kind of randomly putting two or three in per grade level and not having any continuity, it'd be easier to implement it by grade level. The other thing by doing that is we can then concentrate our professional development and training with the staff around how to use our fifth grade teams, say, when they have common planning time or they have PD time, they could actually be pulled to work on something. Would be very difficult to, to pull, you know, two fifth grade, two sixth grade, two seventh, two eighth just because of the way the schedule works to really implement this properly and support it with, with the PD that's necessary. I can ask Bill, so this is kind of the one-time set aside. I can ask Bill to come back and tell us just in general as part of his budget, you know, what additional resources are going to the other schools, say, the, the grades six through eight and even the high school grades ten through twelve that isn't part of this. This I was just seeing kind of as a nice tie-in with the one-on-one. And again, just kind of making sense around that whole implementation and the phasing. And that's also being able to support it because we'll already be working with those teachers around, you know, how to, you know, use and make the best out of it.
I think that would be good because I, I think parity in, in, for everybody is important to consider. You know, be equitable to everyone. And this, this is access to great technology as we can tell since you can already tell if the fourth graders are moving up to fifth grade, they're going to miss something that they've been exposed to and this is necessary. So if that's so, then what that says to me is it looks like it's important for everybody, so.
This is one-time money, not counting the capital money and the money that we've budgeted for the next fiscal year.
Correct.
So that's all, all of that technology that we've budgeted will be district-wide.
Correct. And that's where I can go back and ask Bill like what his plan is for the local operating budget money, like where that's targeted. I just, I didn't think of that for tonight, but I can do that for one of our future meetings.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Next item on the, the list is actually a request. You may have seen these around the district. They don't quite look like a small, you know, it's kind of like a hybrid. It's not like a small school bus. It technically is a little bit of a different setup because it's not, doesn't qualify as a school bus. They call it a multi-person, multi-function student activity vehicle. But think about it as a small bus, a little bus. A lot of schools in our areas are using those. They basically can transport up to fourteen passengers without requiring like CDL or bus licensing. So a lot of schools are using them like during the day. If you have little groups of students that have to go out on, say, like an internship or if a music group was going to sing at a particular place and they just had a small cohort of kids, they could use that to kind of combat some of the difficulty we have dealing with the busing companies and the cost of, say, renting a big bus to bring a group of, you know, six to ten students somewhere. A lot of times this will be used after school for like athletic teams. So if you have, say, the golf team is obviously not a, a team that requires a full school bus. You know, staff could actually just take this and their team and go someplace. A wrestling team, we talked about like particularly if you're going away on a weekend to a day-long competition, you're paying, you know, for the bus to get to your competition, you're paying wait time, downtime. So these can almost just, you know, the staff member can just take the, the bus. We'll obviously have to purchase additional insurance through the town for these. I would personally like to purchase a couple, but I want to just give it a try with one. So the recommendation would be for us to, to actually just purchase one and see how popular it is and how well it's received. Tings Row actually just bought one last year. I went out and took a look at theirs and they almost have paid for theirs back in a year. And this is again, something we would track, the usage, you know, we're using this instead of actually renting a vehicle just to prove that it's actually, you know, cost-effective. Do you, I think you use them as well.
We had one and within two years we had two because we just, we didn't use that much and they were saving that much money on buses. Nothing worse than you take a bus somewhere and it sits there for eight hours and you know you're paying for it, so this is.
I'm sorry.
So go ahead, Donna.
Would this allow us to possibly expand our special education programming as well in terms of?
Yeah, there are districts that do that. Say like even during the day, if you like, say, the, the pay program at the high school and the kids want to go to the food store to do like a shopping excursion, you could take them on, say, this vehicle. You'd have it, you have flexibility as opposed to having to rent a bus to the bus company and have them come and bring them.
Maybe expand some of our vocational education services as well for some of these kids.
It could. It's going to provide flexibility. I think that's why districts, you know, you might sat with one, but you might have two or three quickly because it's just, you know, they're very cost-effective and they don't tie you down to a vendor. And again, you can use it for multi-reasons. So you can do it during the day for that. You can do it for sports in the afternoon and you can do it for music, extracurricular activity in the evenings.
Send some kids over to the senior center to do a small performance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So another question on this. We are going to have something in place on, I can just see that there's going to be a lot of competition for this vehicle. And, and I attended one meeting yesterday where they were talking about the fact that many times athletics gets first dibs on certain things versus other programs and so on. So again, thinking about the sign-out on this vehicle and so on, will somebody be in charge of that? How is that going to work?
Yeah, someone's going to kind of be the owner of it. We'll have to figure out how best to, to do that and how to do the bookings of it. And again, I can see there being high demand for these. So I easily could be coming back at some point in the future and saying we should do two or three. I think if we bought one and kind of worked through the kinks, put some policies and procedures in place as to, you know, how it gets used, you know, protocols around, you know, use, sign-in, sign-out, regulations, all of that. Work that out before we end up having too many of them and try to figure out, you know, what is really our capacity going to be? Do we have a need for two? Do we have a need for three? But we're going to have to work all that out. It's going to have to be a shared resource.
Is there anything, any special things about who drives these? And is, and the insurance, you said it's through the town?
Our insurance is through the town. So I'll actually just work with them to see if there's any like additional rider we need to put on for coverage. But these vehicles, no, it's just a regular driver's license. It's not like a seven D. You don't need a CDL. So a regular driver's license allows you to drive them. Obviously, our staff have to be comfortable doing that, but we'll want to make sure that we produce enough insurance so that that's not, like the insurance isn't an issue. But I'll work through the town on that.
It's technically a big van is what it is, so.
Yeah.
In terms of driving, I've driven it before.
They're not, yeah, they don't seem too difficult to drive. The D, DOR, not DOR, the registry group basically started prohibiting the use of like those long econoline vans that you used to have. The difference between these, they're built on a bus chassis as opposed to a car chassis. So they don't, you know, they, they're less susceptible to any kind of like, say, rolling issues or things like that. They're more stable. So I know just a regular driver's license is, is all that's required. And I do think it's going to be very well received and I think it's going to be highly.
Have it branded, they're going to say.
Absolutely. We'll do, no, we'll do something.
Can I return to the prior line item?
Sure.
Just so I understand, the thirty-eight thousand each line item is for?
Ten. So it's for ten classrooms.
Okay. And then the one fifty-two is?
Forty.
Forty.
Okay.
Forty. So it's thirty-eight hundred dollars per classroom.
Okay.
And again, so that, part of that forty is that's going to reach beyond just the ninth grade students with the one-on-one.
Okay.
Right. The high school definitely is in need of this newer technology. So this is going to allow us to get quicker and deeper into the high school implementation. And as we identify additional one-time funding in the future, this is certainly something I'll come back to you with so that we can expand even, even quicker.
How many classrooms are there in high school?
I knew you were going to ask that.
I'm sorry.
I want to say.
Linda?
Hundred and fifteen?
I'm just walking myself through the high school. Yeah, you're close to about a hundred, a hundred twenty classrooms in that high school. The classrooms are different, right? You know, it depends on what we call a classroom, not just the four wall classroom.
But I do know that Bill keeps an inventory of like what is where at the high school now. So he can tell us how many rooms have technology and we'll keep track of where, where this goes.
This is kind of the next generation of the whiteboard and.
Yeah.
Okay. So we still have whiteboards in a lot of the classrooms in the high school that are still being used.
Right.
LCD projectors and all this stuff.
LCD projectors, yeah. We don't have a lot, I don't think we have any, to be honest with you, of the interactive TVs at the high school. They've really been more of an elementary initiative, a few at the middle school level, but this will be fresh and new to the high school. And again, four or five years from now, there may be a new technology when we're replacing it and we'll put that in instead.
So, and on the whiteboards, I've lost track of this. We're not installing any more of these, right?
So the interactive TV has kind of taken the place of the whiteboard.
Good.
But I think we, we finished that two years ago, three years ago.
Yeah, several years ago. We also have some, there might not be an actual board. What they do is the actual projector itself is interactive. So you could actually just project, if I just had a plain whiteboard here or some type of cloth or anything, you can just, the interactive piece comes through the actual machine rather than the board itself.
It's incredible, huh?
Yeah, Apple TVs and all that.
Yes.
And it's something different.
I'm feeling like Star Trek in the, you know.
Right, the Chromes can, you can do.
Transformable.
And then last but not least on the list of recommendations is, again, so this would be similar to the photocopy recommendation. If we get to that in June, we have the second and final payment for the update to the fitness center at the high school that we did. We basically broke the payment down into a two-year contract. So we're set to make the final payment to the, the company on July one for just under forty thousand dollars. So I'm just recommending we make that, you know, in fiscal nineteen, so we can make that before June thirtieth. It's a payment we're going to make anyway and then that'll free up, say, forty thousand dollars in the fiscal twenty budget that we can look at how to, how to use. So this list before you comes up to four hundred eighty-seven thousand. It's a little under the half a million. I think I feel very safe and comfortable with that particular number. Again, with the goal being at the end of the fiscal year to be able to carry over at least two point five million in circuit breaker. And again, as we get closer into early June, when the final payroll projection hits and whatnot, we may come back if we need to spend a little bit more to not have that circuit breaker reimbursement go over two point five. And again, just so you're not surprised, my recommendation would be like, say, the photocopies because it's something we're going to buy in twenty, just move up the payment to nineteen as opposed to twenty. But this isn't, I don't want you to think this is like frivolous spending or things that we're spending that we wouldn't normally have. We're just moving up payments that were going to be made in twenty into, into nineteen.
I have three quick questions. One is, so we're going to keep the two point five million in circuit breaker. Do we have to worry about that five payments in fiscal year two thousand twenty?
Yeah, so this, that takes into consideration the worst-case scenario that the five payments hit.
Okay.
There is still a chance that the five payments will not.
Okay.
In nineteen, she said twenty, the five payments in fiscal nineteen?
Nineteen, I'm sorry, yes. I was actually, I was, yes, yes.
So this is worst-case scenario, if the five payments came.
Okay.
We'd be at two point five.
Okay.
If the five payments don't come, if we only get four and the fifth payment doesn't hit until July, then is it seven or eight hundred thousand per payment?
Seven hundred and thirteen thousand.
So, you know, we'd be, you know, closer to one point seven, one point eight. But it will be, once July comes, the payment will be there.
I'm worried about it for this year. I'm worried about it for next year too because it seems to be the trend lately, right? That they have been doing this for the last couple of years?
The late payment?
Yeah, the late payment.
You honestly just can't, you can't predict it. You have to plan for the worst case, which is getting the five payments because we got the last payment in July.
And what's our max that we can carry?
You can carry, it's a, it's a moving number because it's based on your last year's allocation. So you can carry over your, the, the total amount that you received the previous year. So we're at two point.
For, well, it was three point one.
I don't want to get.
Right, no, no, I agree.
No, yeah, absolutely.
And the other thing is, I do think two point five is a very healthy number to have in that account. You don't want to have too much in, in the reserve and not have a spending plan for it. So I, I feel very comfortable with the two-five.
And South Row doesn't need anything?
No, not at this point on this particular list. I mean, we'll, we'll, once we make these purchases, we'll put out the call again. But I know I did ask everyone if they had anything that they needed to come forward.
Very territorial, Donna.
Yeah, she's protective.
Very protective, South Row, you know.
We have supported South Row, we support all the schools, but we have supported South Row a lot this year with the implementation of the STRI program, purchasing a lot for that. But no, there were no specific South Row related asks.
Obviously, they weren't on the list.
Can I ask, I'm sorry.
Just one last thing. If we were to look at this list, how many of these projects could be considered capital budget projects? And actually, you know what, you don't even have to answer that for me right now. But the reason I ask this is because I do think it's important for the finance committee and the Board of Selectmen to understand that we're using some of our money. for the finance committee and the board of selectmen to understand that we're using some of our money to cover capital, things that could be potentially capital budget items.
Right.
So that they understand that, you know, we're taking care of some business, you know, on our own, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it. You know what, you know what I'm trying to get at?
Yeah, I guess it's, it's the definition of, of capital.
Okay.
And like, is it the, the five thousand dollar minimum project, does it have a life that exceeds three years? I mean, really, all of this does, with probably the exception of like the CPI training equipment, the mannequins and the, you know, the high-low activity chair, just because those are more, you know, kinda one-time, you know, smaller purchases. I lump those numbers together, even the, the science equipment. But, you know, of this four hundred eighty-seven thousand, you know, easily four and a quarter or, you know, close to four fifty could be considered on capital.
And I say, I think that this is important to keep in mind when we're talking about our budget and, you know, we're presenting to the finance committee and at town meeting to help people understand that, you know, there's a lot that we are taking care of through our own budget. It isn't necessarily, as I said, going through the capital committee and things like that. I, I only mention, I just think it's worth keeping in mind, as I said.
True.
These account numbers, what accounts are these, these monies coming out of? I see a bunch of different ones, there's.
To the right are the DESI categories. I was gonna write down every single account number and it just got too big. So, I, the DESI category, like for example, classroom teachers begins with two-three-oh-five in your budget book and then listed on that page is the twenty categories of teachers and that's the one where we're most favorable, close to four hundred thousand. So, the intent was to show that we'd take it from that category and then put it into, like on the first one, it would be instructional equipment. So, on your budget book, it's the two-four-two-zero and then on the year-to-date budget reports too. So, that was the.
And we can do those type of transfers, so we can go from the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Dr. Lang and I talked about that, should I list every single account number or kinda group them? And I landed at grouping and then you'll see it on the, if this goes through, you'll see it on the May report that we post to the website, the transfers in the different categories.
All that in detail will come here, it was very messy to, to do the other way.
Okay. All right, what do we need to do at this point then?
So, if you agree with the recommendations, I think it would be okay to make a motion to approve the one-time expenditures as presented in accordance with the budget transfers provided by Joanna or outlined by Joanna.
I make a motion to approve the one-time purchase recommendations as presented. What was the?
Additionally, or in accordance with the budget transfers.
In accordance with the budget transfers presented.
That's fine.
Any second?
I think the intent is.
Second?
Yeah. Okay, other questions on this? Well, of course I had, where, where are they gonna put the ropes across the high school?
I honestly don't know.
I think there's not a lot of trees.
Yeah, I have a, I have a feeling it might go out.
In the building, the pack, there's a lot of trees, that's where a lot of.
Okay, okay, I see, between the big field and that, okay.
I didn't get into that level of detail, but I do know, yeah, I do know that they've identified a, a place, but that I don't know. We can make sure you're the first one to, to go up.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Can I give a knowledge ball update?
We gotta do the ball first.
Oh, I thought, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I could do it.
All right, any other questions?
Do we own any other vehicles in the school department we do?
Yeah, so we have, we don't have a lot of vehicles here, actually. We have one vehicle for facilities that Brian Curley drives during the day to the various schools. In food services, we have a, that, a refrigerated truck that delivers the school, the food from the high school to the elementary schools. That's a truck that we're actually probably gonna put some branding on this summer as well, 'cause it's just a big white truck right now. And then we also, in the food services program, they have a small little utility, like an Ford Escape type vehicle that they also have had for years, that they do drive things back and forth to the schools. So, probably four vehicles.
So, and we maintain those and so on?
Yes.
Clean the snow off of them, do all that wonderful stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do that.
Anybody, any other questions? Okay, Al?
All right.
Maria?
All right. Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi, five zero. Now we can get our update, hey, we have to get our update.
Before we move on, Linda's jumping in.
Very important, so we're, right now, it's been halfway through the session, we are in second and we're going on to the current events round, so they're, they're working very hard. I won't give you the actual numbers, because I feel like that will jinx it, but we're getting there, so we're ahead of Tuxbury, up against Lowell.
Okay. Moving forward.
Okay. Dennis, would you mind if, oh, Donna just left. I was gonna say Cheryl's here for the personnel reports.
Yeah.
But I know Donna had some, some, it was in response to one of Donna's inquiries.
Okay.
So, well, we can keep going, but then maybe when Donna comes back, if you don't mind taking that item out of order, just so Cheryl can participate and then maybe leave.
You don't wanna save for the whole thing? Oh, there's Donna there. All right, so we're gonna take items out of order and we're gonna do the personnel report next, that's okay with everybody?
So, down your agenda, item number seven and eight, these two items relate to personnel. So, item number seven is the April personnel report. This is prepared by Dr. Kirkpatrick who's here this evening. And again, this is just a summary document that outlines the new hires, the resignations we've received. Most of these, you'll see, the people are finishing the school year and then they've just accepted or are gonna be moving on to new positions for the fall. And we have a few assignment changes for people internally in the district that might be transferring from one position to another. Again, no action of the school committees required, just to kinda give you a sense of the, the comings and goings of staff. Any questions on the personnel report? The report number eight was a substitute staffing report. This is a report that Cheryl had put together, largely to request for Donna to take a look at some of our substitute staffing requirements. And Cheryl actually kinda walked you through the current process. And then we were taking a look specifically, I think the question came up of for teachers, teacher substitutes now, we do require a bachelor's degree. And if candidates had an associate's degree, if the committee would be open to allowing people with an associate's degree to sub for teachers. We allow people with associate's degrees to be substitutes for, say, recess aides or para-professionals and whatnot, but they typically do not sub for teachers. We don't have a lot, as the report indicates, and Cheryl's welcome to come up, or if people have questions, to certainly walk you through it. I think the recommendation from Cheryl would be if the committee is open to, kind of on a case-by-case basis, taking a look at a candidate's background and if they had, say, an associate's degree that might be in like, say, a school-related field, early childhood or whatnot, and we feel that person might be a good candidate to be a teacher sub, that we'd be given the latitude to be able to make that decision and make that hire. But I do think it would, should be a case-by-case basis, because someone could have an associate's degree in something that has nothing to do with education and it might not be the right fit. So, I don't think we wanna start marketing that we're looking for associate's degree individuals to necessarily be substitutes for our teachers, but there could be cases where it could work. So, in the end, kinda that's the, the recommendation, as, as well as having a lot of other information just in our subprogram. But didn't know how you feel about that, if people have any follow-up questions for Cheryl, she's here. With some, some good data that just kinda talks about our existing practices, number of subs, turnover, things along those lines.
So, is one of the, is it okay to ask questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is one of the reasons for this report, because I see signs everywhere, we're looking for substitutes? Is, what is the reason for the report at this time?
Yeah, we always have like, we're always looking to, to hire substitutes. So, substitutes are a pool that, when you get good subs in buildings and good subs in the district, oftentimes those same people, because you see them every day, you kinda get to try them out. If a position opens up in the district, they're a natural person to go to, they then come out of the sub-ranks and you, you have to kinda replenish your subpool. This actually had come, Donna had brought this up as just a suggestion for us to take a look at, you know, could we potentially hire individuals with associate's degrees to be teachers? And I don't know if you wanna elaborate on that, but that's, that was kinda the genesis for putting this information together and at least being able to look at it.
So, what, what was the reason for the, what, the reason I'm concerned about this is because if you, if your substitute is gonna have an associate's degree, we require somebody with a bachelor's degree to actually teach. Right, our teachers all have at least a minimum of a bachelor's degree.
Our substit-, well, our teachers, permanent teachers certainly do. Right now, substitute teachers have to have a minimum of a bachelor's degree.
That's great, because the, the concern I have is you bring in a sub, I remember my children, one year in middle school, had a sub long-term for, you know, an entire year in a very important subject. I would be very concerned in that situation, that that person didn't have the right credentials here and also I'd be thinking about it in terms of the long-term contract with our teaching staff, about whether we're requiring subs who would fill a long-term type of situation and then we're not, you know, I, I don't wanna set any kind of.
Yeah, there's nothing to worry about on the teacher contract front, because substitutes are not part of the, the teacher bargaining group at all.
I understand, but what, they're filling in for exact, a position that is equivalent to what we're contracting for. So, that would be a concern and I think that that's something that legally you should ask council about if we're gonna make this kind of recommendation. So, I would not feel comfortable at this time making the recommendation without knowing that.
Can I interject for one second?
Sure.
On the, the concern about like the long-term sub and, long-term subs actually, for us, they have to have a bachelor's degree, but we also require a DESI licensure for that.
Okay.
So, that, that wouldn't be a concern for like an associate's degree individual, because they wouldn't be able to get a DESI license anyway. So, this would be more looking at just day-to-day sub openings if we were going to expand this. But there wouldn't be any concern about long-term subs, because they have to have a bachelor's degree and they have to have a DESI license.
Okay, the other thing about the report is it seems to indicate that would make very little difference in the percentage of people who actually come forwards to apply for a position that would have an associate's degree. So, it wouldn't make much difference even if we do allow it, at least the pattern seems to indicate that at this time.
It may, I think what we don't know is we're not marketing to that right now, so we don't know if, if that would be like, it may not be enticing for someone with an associate's degree in, say, early childhood or elementary ed to sub only for a para, they may wanna sub for a teacher. There are other districts in our area, because it's a district-by-district determination of your criteria. There are other districts in the area that actually allow individuals with, say, an associate's degree to be a sub. Or some districts actually don't require a degree at all to be a sub, it's just a certain age you have to, to be at. So, that's, it's really a district-by-district decision. I think we don't know if it would help or not, because we don't actively advertise for that and we wouldn't know until we really got into that. So, it may help, it may not, we don't know.
So, I, I think the rationale behind this was, so let me give you an example. You know, maybe we have someone with, who's completed their associates in early childhood education and they may wanna be a day-to-day sub, so not necessarily filling in for multiple days or is a long-term position in a classroom at the elementary school level. My thought was, is that they would be more qualified in some ways than a person who has maybe a bachelor's in business administration who may be filling in at that level. And it might be an opportunity to, to kind of tap into, you know, this particular market of people who may have some experience in working with children in order to be able to help out, especially at the elementary level.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, you, you can get your preschool license with your associate degree also, even if stu-, and they might be going on to get their bachelor's degree, so a day-to-day sub might be a great position for them, that they can pick and choose when they're available and then go to their classes. The other thing is, is even your four-year programs that are doing initial licensure, they front load that with the education classes, 'cause they're gonna let you know if you're, we're gonna continue in the education program, 'cause you still have to get a degree in a specific concentration as well. So, some of those students that may decide that they wanna get their associates, they might come out of their four-year to a two-year, because money, whatever it is. I mean, there's many circumstances, but I would agree with you that I would rather have somebody with their associate degree in early childhood than, I won't say business administration, I'll say, you know, I don't know, electrical engineering.
It's very hurtful, Donna, it's very hurtful.
Yeah. So, ju-, yeah, not dismissing your concerns. I just think that the process that we go through, we, we would put qualified people in front of them and it cannot be a, a long-term sub in that content area, 'cause they would have to be certified, that is a requirement.
And with an associate, they would have to be interviewed?
Oh, yeah.
Approved.
Oh, anyone has to be interviewed.
Okay, all right.
And I think if we were to do that, that's what Cheryl was looking for, just to have that ability to, to handle them individually on a case-by-case basis, to see if the person was.
We asked Cheryl?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, Cheryl.
Again, again, in your, you said you would be in favor of considering this, would this be something that you think would be helpful?
Well, I, I think that it's worth considering, because of exactly what Dr. Hirsch was saying, you know. It, it is the type of situation where you could very well have somebody who's qualified to be able to do this job, who is doing a different path for education and not necessarily going straight to a bachelor's degree. And you'd hope too, that the district kind of poises itself to be that kind of a pipeline. A lot of our substitutes come from the community. I think we wanna be able to support community members to be able to have these experiences and even maybe the kind of mentoring and experiences in the classroom that might even propel them to go on to get a bachelor's degree and, and continue. So, I think it's worth considering, whether or not it would really help in terms of propelling our numbers or our fill rates or anything like that, that's uncertain.
You could actually market that, we would obviously work with Middlesex, all of our associate degree programs in the area and they would help us with that process.
So, if we were to make this kind of, accept this recommendation and we limit it to associate's degrees that are in education?
I think that is a case-by-case base, I think is how it was stated in there, so you would have to.
'Cause I know very few associate's degrees that actually concentrate in a particular area. You're usually getting your general type of education right up front.
Yeah, they've changed that a lot, there's pathways now, so there's STEM pathways, there's pathways for like medical assistance. They, they don't just come out with a, I don't, I don't believe there's just a liberal arts one, like it was, that's probably what you're thinking, what we're used to, but they have pathways now that are very specific for different jobs, functions that are out there.
And I mean, not to belabor the point, but just, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, but if a person was coming, say, out of business and they passed their MTS, they could go into the classroom and teach with having had no teaching experience whatsoever. So, you know, we're talking about a group of people here who actually may have had some experience in working with kids, you know, so I, I see it to, to our advantage to include them in the pool.
Sure.
Am I wrong about that?
No, no, you're absolutely right, I was just.
There's a bunch of different like undergrad degrees you can have and the, and the criteria basically even for your provisional license is just to pass the MTS.
Just pass it, never having to step foot in a classroom.
No, but it could be a, a number of different undergrad degrees. Basically, just to be able to, to pass the test.
We have proof of this, remember when the tech field was down and we had a transition program for engineers? That didn't work out real well.
Sometimes it does, sometimes.
Sometimes it does. Oh, my God.
Sometimes it doesn't, I know.
I think you're proving.
Okay, so I, can I just sort of be really clear on those, on the long-term sub, which is considered what? What is considered a long-term sub?
Anything longer than ten consecutive days.
Okay, anything longer than ten consecutive days, an actual bachelor's is required.
License is.
And a license.
And a license.
Yeah.
Is that so?
It's all right what we have. All right, so what type of action do we wanna take on this? Make a recommendation or?
Yeah, do you, do you mind me asking Cheryl?
Yeah, no.
Is there an actual policy to the effect that, that talks about the sub criteria or is it more just like our internal procedures?
I've never seen anything written, it's just been the, you know, procedures that we followed.
Okay, if you'd like, because I mean, this would be a change from something that we've, we've normally done. I don't know if you would be comfortable, you know, just kind of voting on a, or change this evening, if you would want me to write up some kind of a, like a recommended motion for you to take, present it at the next meeting so you could vote on it.
Yeah, probably be best to do that, yeah.
If you want, just kinda have it all together. If you want, just kind of have it all together.
That's the reasonable, yeah, yeah.
Um, and that way it could be very specific about, you know, under what criteria we would be doing this, just so that we're all on the same page. We then kind of give Cheryl her marching orders going forward.
Yep.
And, um, you know, you know, kind of who you can consider, just so there's no vagueness.
Yep.
Would that be alright?
That sounds like a good plan.
It'd be great.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Thank you.
Thanks.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Alright, so I need one second. A very brief one. Just one second to get this going. I knew I was going to be, you know, kind of talking for a little bit about the, um, various elements of the year-end review. You know, I figured for people watching at home, I would just put up, um, you know, some bullet points so that they could follow what I was talking about. But at the, uh, at the end of each school year, we typically, um, provide a little bit of a summary, thank you Cheryl, a little bit of a, uh, summary of just some of the kind of highlights from the school year. Um, what I do is I go back, um, to last summer and actually go through all of our different school committee packets as a way of, if the public were to ever come and actually look and see, uh, what we've been working on as a district over this past year, um, a way to be able to point out some of those things to them. So when I look back at our work from this past year, I provided you with a memo, uh, that we call the year-end review that ultimately will get posted up to the website. Again, this is kind of a tracking document. Uh, but I wanted to highlight a few, uh, things that I, uh, thought were important. Um, so again, for, um, I think the third year in a row, um, when it comes to kind of finance and operations and setting ourselves up, uh, structurally in the district, uh, we had a very good year, uh, with our financial audits. I know this, uh, may, uh, you know, seem like a small thing, but this is really actually a significant thing. Um, we, again, in fiscal eighteen, we have a, um, a third-party, uh, private group come in, do a financial audit of our, uh, books, of our reports that we have to submit to the Department of Education. And again, we had no financial findings, no recommendations. Um, you know, we submitted a, um, fifty-nine million dollar budget and, you know, to the dollar, have to report that to the DOE in a number of different categories. Um, we've talked about this, Joanna and her staff do a very good job of, uh, reporting the finding and, and making sure everything is in order with the DOE, and, uh, we're very proud about, uh, about that. So, um, that audit went extremely well, uh, for eighteen. Again, I think third year in a row, no findings, no recommendations. That's significant for any district, uh, in, in the Commonwealth. Um, but again, just to have that year-over-year, I think, uh, just talks about our, um, some of the financial practices that we put in place and, and our strong financial position. Aside from that audit, which I don't, uh, you know, I didn't bring up, you know, we have now gotten on a cycle of updating our student activity accounts and having those audited. So this past year, we completed our Chelmsford High School audit. We're undergoing our middle school audit now. Um, those reports, again, for transparency purposes, are all posted up to the district, uh, website so that anywhere from the public can see them, but we're, we're proud of that work. Um, when it came to the fiscal nineteen budget, again, I think, uh, we strive to make sure that all the school committee members had accurate information, they had timely information. Um, you receive monthly financial reports. They're all uploaded to the Dropbox. We receive quarterly reports from Joanna and her staff on the local operating budget, our grant funds, our revolving funds. And, um, you know, we're in, again, very good shape. We've talked about, uh, throughout the course of the year. We were just able to reallocate some money in fiscal nineteen for those one-time purchases, which again, uh, I think just is a testament to some of the, um, the work that we've collectively been done to set a direction for the district and actually, uh, have that roadmap, um, match, uh, match our practices. Uh, at the end of this year, you know, we're anticipating approximately two and a half million dollars as a set aside in Circuit Breaker, which was more than we even sat out on, um, a couple of years ago, so I think we should be proud of that. Um, if you recall, just four years ago, uh, we actually found ourselves a half million dollar short right at the beginning of the fiscal year and had to go to the town to have them help us out and, and give us some money. They did. We were very happy to, to do that. But I'm, I'm glad that we haven't had to go back and ask for more and that we've been able to set ourselves up with that, uh, set aside. A lot of districts in the Commonwealth are struggling with their food service funds and their food service programs. We've put a significant amount of time and effort this year into our, uh, food service program. We've expanded our programming at the elementary level. We've taken control of our program back in district. Um, just up to this past year, we used to contract with preferred meals for the frozen meal option at the elementary schools. I think I have heard nothing but positives all school year. Um, at the elementary school level, the power packs have been, uh, very well received. Uh, Nancy Antolini and the food service staff have done a remarkable job in the, uh, schools. Um, and I think they, they need to be commended. Um, in addition to all those increased, um, kind of strains that we've put on the program, um, you know, we're anticipating again, over half a million, probably close to six hundred thousand dollars as an available fund balance in food services at the end of the year, uh, which is almost unheard of. Uh, most districts are actually struggling to just, you know, make the bottom line or they're operating in the red. Um, we're going to be able to take some of that six hundred thousand dollars. We obviously want to keep a two- or three-month set aside, uh, for operating expenses, but anything over that, we can then start to reinvest in the schools. We did receive, uh, capital funding from the town to be able to start to, um, to upgrade some of our kitchens around code compliance issues and serving lines, uh, but we're going to be able to take some of that, uh, set aside as well. Again, not have to go to the town's capital, but be able to invest that as well in some of our schools. And I think lastly, um, you know, I'm proud of the fact that we've been able to, um, do and really implement a lot of the programming in the district without having to, uh, really touch the school choice, uh, set aside. And we've been able to now earmark that to fund the one-on-one computer initiative that we're rolling out next fall. You know, we're, we're going to be at approximately one point six million at the end of next year. We're not going to need all that one point six million for the one-on-one, so we're going to be able to start talking about how else we may want to allocate that towards other, um, programming within the district. When it came to the fiscal twenty, we're looking forward to July one, uh, budget review and presentation. We actually presented a couple of weeks earlier than the prior year. Um, we were able to provide, uh, multiple opportunities for the public to be able to come forward, present their, um, questions, their concerns around the budget. We took that into consideration when we were putting our budget together. And I think you have a budget document that really addresses a lot of the things that we as a group have been working on. Um, obviously, our budgets always include the contractual step and lane increases. We do have a set aside for contract negotiations. Um, we actually had a net decrease in special ed out of district tuition, which doesn't always happen. But when it did, we were able to take that funding and actually reinvest it in programs and services in the budget. Um, we were able to reinstate our final, uh, curriculum coordinator position for world languages. Uh, we're expanding that to also include student exchange programs. I'm very excited about that. I think that's going to be a great, uh, enhancement to the district. Um, this past year or the current year that we're in, we were able to add two assistant principals at the elementary level. We're able to now add two more, um, this year. We have two great candidates that are going to be joining us in July so that we have a full complement at the elementary schools in the fall. Um, you know, an additional integrated preschool classroom in chips. Our preschool numbers are growing. Uh, so that's something that we're going to have to obviously watch in years to come. But we're putting additional funding and resources to be able to help our, uh, students at the very youngest ages, uh, provide them the services that they need to hopefully, um, integrate very well as they transition up into the elementary levels of the district. Um, we're in the, the latter stages of actually hiring our social worker at Parker Middle School. That's something that we've talked about for a couple of years, adding a social worker component to the district. We did that when we took a look at our counseling services in the schools. Um, but that individual is going to be, uh, starting over the summer and, and ready to hit the ground running on July one. I know that we, they're down to a couple of finalists for that position now, but I think that's going to be very, uh, significant. So we've taken a number of steps to really set ourselves up well for fiscal twenty. I think we're very solid when it comes to our personnel and non-personnel items. And I'm excited, if you think next year going into fiscal twenty is going to be the, the third and, uh, final year of our strategic plan. So as a group, I would really like the school committee, the administration, you know, parents and staff in the district to start taking a look at where we want to go for the next three to five years. And we'll put together a, uh, longer-term plan again to bring us from twenty twenty to about twenty twenty-five and make sure that we actually spend the time talking about where we're currently at, what we're doing well. Well, it's a lot, what we want to, uh, to work on in the years to come. And, um, I'm very happy and appreciative of the fact that when we go to town meeting, um, you know, we, we're well-supported and town meeting has, um, um, you know, approved our budgets again, asked good questions. Um, we've provided answers and, um, and they've supported us. Another key, uh, element of our work this past year, and not just our, my work or the work of our staff at Central Office, but the school committee was also actively involved in finalizing our ten-year capital plan. So we had, uh, two years ago, uh, received funding from the town for the Dora Whittier study. We spent a significant amount of time with community forums and presentations around, uh, where, uh, do we want our facilities to be aligned with our programming in the years to come? Um, Dora Whittier's report was extensive and it was broken down into multiple layers. We took those different layers. We prioritized all the different recommendations into, uh, short-term, medium-term, long-term, um, projects that the district should embark upon, and, uh, we prioritized that. Our first step was actually to produce that report for, uh, the capital committee this past, um, uh, November. Uh, we had a one point seven million dollar list of, uh, priority one items in year one of the report. We were able to have a million dollars of that funded. We're going to have to go back and kind of relook at reallocating that seven hundred thousand that wasn't approved into years two to ten. Um, but I think that's good work. It's a living document. It's something that we're going to have to refer back to from time to time. Um, but I think the fact that we actually have a roadmap on facilities is important. That also ties into some of our short-term MSBA projects, whether it be the accelerated repair project with the roof at South Row or our longer-term project hopefully of building a new, uh, school in town in the years to come. Um, and they're, they are all, uh, you know, tied in together, so that's something that we closely work on. Um, I did mention the, the capital expenditures that were approved, so we received, uh, about a million dollars in capital expenditures. And again, you'll see two of the line items, about two hundred eighty-five thousand and a hundred thousand are earmarked towards our, uh, school feeding, uh, programs and our cafeteria upgrades. Some were code compliance, some were actually expansion of the service lines. We mentioned earlier the work that Nancy and her staff are doing. We're seeing increases in our, uh, participation rates. So at the end of the year, when we produce over the summer, a report from you, a cumulative report in the year, you'll see that our actual participation rates at the elementary, uh, schools in particular, because we're, we're doing the programming in-house, is, uh, significantly increased. The other area that we, um, received funding through the capital in this past year is the expansion of the Park and Water Harrington. We'll talk about that a little bit later on tonight. I know that in center is, is a big, um, a big issue that we're going to address this summer. And lastly, it's the first of a three-phased, uh, upgrade to our school security systems, uh, camera, our intrusion systems in the buildings, uh, where McCarthy and Parker will both be updated with the, uh, latest technologies this coming summer. The year after, the high school will be updated, and the year, uh, the third year of the program is when the elementary schools, uh, receive their funding. When you look at some of the programs that we actually implemented this past year that, again, I, I'm, I'm proud of, I think our staff have done an incredible job of implementing. There has been a lot of time and effort and planning that have gone into all of these. Um, but, you know, one is certainly our updating all of our emergency planning preparedness, uh, programs. Um, our Alice response protocol, we had a significant number, um, you know, more than any district in the area, uh, trained in the Alice protocols this past, uh, or last spring, um, so that we could actually implement that as a team this past school year. Um, I'm appreciative and thankful for the support that we received from the town, the police department, the fire department, um, Trinity, our first responders, going to have done a, um, again, just an incredible job of working with our individual staff and students in the buildings as we roll out that plan. And, um, that again, is, uh, the work of a lot in the district. Um, Kelly Rogers, our coordinator for ELL and, uh, Title One, and we call her Kelly Alice. Uh, but Kelly, uh, has really kind of taken the lead on that and has done just a, a phenomenal job of keeping us on track. So that's something that I'm very, uh, very happy about. We did this past year also, uh, complete our coordinated program review with, uh, DESI, again, a significant review. Uh, DESI comes in every five years or so and takes a look at our special education program, our, our ELL programming, our civil rights components, uh, to make sure that the district is in compliance with all the different rules and regulations. Um, we have gone through, is, am I making you cry with this report?
A lot of people have that allergy. It's fine.
So, you know, that, that was a significant, again, staff undertaking to, um, uh, to be able to do. But, uh, the Department of Ed has approved all of our different recommendations and, and, uh, responses to that report, so that, that was significant. Um, I want to acknowledge the work that the, um, internal committee of, uh, special education, regular ed staff have done, in particular, the work at, uh, South Row supporting and developing the STRIVE program. So one of the components of the coordinated program review, um, we're aware of this, but it pointed out the fact that we didn't have a full continuum of programming and services in the district. That we had, uh, behavioral and therapeutic programming at the middle school and the high school, but we didn't have that programming at the elementary school level, and that was a need. Um, so I remember when we were presenting the fiscal nineteen budget, we included funding for the STRIVE program. And we said if we were going to do it real, really, we really wanted to do it well, that it had to be well-staffed. If we were going to put the time and effort into doing it, we wanted it to be a dynamic program. Um, Molly McMahon, the principal of South Row, the South Row staff have been phenomenal at, um, just kind of owning this program. Uh, a significant number of staff went out, looked at all the different programs in the area. They took back the very best, um, components, and they have developed over the course of the year the STRIVE program. Um, you know, it's supported with a full-time BCBAs, special education teachers, paraprofessionals, um, and seamlessly has integrated into the South Row community and has provided such support for the students that have participated in that program. It's been, um, it's been incredible. As a side note, and this wasn't a, um, you know, a consideration of the program, um, you know, we have, we have been able to maintain and manage and better serve any of our students who typically would have needed some type of a therapeutic setting out of district this past year at the STRIVE program at South Row. Uh, I don't believe we've had a single elementary school student even be referred, uh, for not a district evaluation or, um, placement, uh, because the staff has been so responsive at South Row. Um, so that has been, uh, just incredible in a year's time to be able to, uh, to make that kind of an impact. And all the credit goes to, uh, to the South Row staff, the special ed staff in, uh, in making that happen. Um, we had a couple of significant staff appointments this past year. Um, right at the end of the summer, going into the start of the school year, uh, Tom Wright, who was our former director of guidance, um, resigned to take a job in a different district. Um, we're very happy for Tom. It was certainly something he wanted to do, and I think he's very well-suited for the position he has. It allowed us to then step back and take a look at that position and, and look at the fact that, you know, our three, three-year strategic plan goal two was really all around supporting the students' social-emotional needs in the district. And if we're going to replace that coordinator of school guidance services, um, we needed to expand that and actually have it be, um, directly impactful on supporting students' social-emotional learning. Uh, so we re- re-crafted that job description. Uh, we saw it and we hired, um, Lorraine Wilson to come on board this past December. She, um, transitioned into the position. Um, she is taking the co-lead with Katie Sims, uh, in the district on supporting the district-level, uh, SEL programming, and that has been a significant, um, shift that you've seen at the schools. As our individual schools have come to present over the course of this year, they're all talking about how not only academically they're supporting students, but they're supporting the health and wellbeing and, uh, social needs of students. Um, so there's been a significant emphasis on that, and I think by realigning that staff position, it again has suited us well in the long term. Um, this past year, we were also able to reinstate the ELA coordinator, uh, for five-twelve. Again, we had to combine that with social studies some years back. Um, Abby Dick joined us for this past school year and is really working with our, uh, grade seven to twelve teachers in English and has made a, uh, a big impact in her first year. I think that is, um, great and telling, just at the point that we're, we're able to reinstate those positions. With adding back for fiscal twenty, the world language and exchange program coordinator, we're really going to be fully staffed in that realm. And, uh, I'm really excited about getting into fiscal twenty and having that all, all come together. I mentioned earlier, so I won't elaborate, um, too much further, but this past year, I think the, uh, the addition of the elementary assistant principals was just huge. Uh, one of the things I'd heard when I came into the district was, um, how we needed to better support students, particularly at the elementary school level. When you looked at our structures, uh, in our buildings, um, you know, we had a single, uh, building administrator holding so many different directions on a day-to-day basis, um, that the second person has allowed them, um, not only to, to focus and, and, uh, take a, a deeper look at some of the academic work in the buildings, but be able to handle some of the, um, uh, the different day-to-day operational issues that come up. Um, we really have a great complement of, uh, principal, assistant principal when it comes to skill sets around, uh, being able to support teachers with academic and instructional needs, students with social-emotional needs, counseling services. Uh, we've got a great cadre of staff that can really, um, support students at that level, and I'm, I'm happy that we're able to do that. Um, this past year, Bill Silver, our director of technology convened a group, um, to take a look again at that one-on-one initiative that we've talked a lot about. Um, not a lot of districts have been able to, uh, kind of pull that off. Funding is certainly an obstacle, uh, in a lot of districts. We were able to identify that, um, school choice revolving fund as a revenue source, uh, and it's not just a one-time revenue source, which, which I think is significant because sometimes districts might embark on something like that using, say, a one-time set aside. But where you don't have the recurring revenue, it's very difficult when you get into years two, three, and a full implementation at year four, to have enough funding to be able to sustain it. And I think by utilizing the, uh, school choice funding, again, we're setting us... And I think by utilizing the school choice funding, again, we're setting this up well. There were over 20 people that convened to work on a committee to talk about all the specifics of this initiative. It'll roll out this summer, and again, it's something I'm very proud of. People in the district is clamoring for additional, you know, technologies and being able to use technologies and being able to actually provide, I'm thinking, four years down the line, every student and staff member in our district grades five to 12, you know, with the device so that there are no obstacles, I think is significant. So I'm very proud of that as well. And lastly, just a couple of smaller points, but I think they're certainly worth mentioning. We're in contract negotiations with our four employee groups who have contracts expiring at the end of this year going into next year. We had very kind of succinct and successful negotiations with our administrators association and also our food services association, and those groups are ready to start, you know, July 1 with new three-year contracts. We've had very good talks with our two remaining groups, our teachers and our paraprofessionals. I think we're making very good headway and look forward to, you know, in the not-too-near, not-too-distant future, you know, hopefully wrapping up those contracts as well to allow us to start again fiscal '20, September 1 of '19, in great shape with our employee groups, all with current contracts. So I like to just provide this as kind of an annual report for you to show you just some of the highlights of what I think our collective work these, this past year was. It's, I think it's a good reflection of us, and I think it's good to be able to share this with the public and be able to talk about it a little bit. And again, just goes back and revisits, there's so much that happens day-to-days within school systems. We have accomplished a lot this past year, and again, I think it's important to just acknowledge that and use it as an opportunity to kind of refresh and start talking about the next school year. So we are doing this a little bit earlier, probably a month or two earlier than we did previously, but I think this is nice, kind of as the school year comes to an end, we can then spend the summer really talk, so I need to talk about what we want the next school year to be. So thank you. I appreciate being able to provide that report, and I still very much enjoy my day-to-day work here.
Thank you for the very thorough report and all the hard work. You said we got a lot of stuff done this year, and hopefully can keep that up coming years too. Any other comments?
No, just thank you for the work. It's been a good year. I think next year's going to be great, so I'm looking forward to it.
I think this is a great report. I had a chance after I read it to actually, you know, think about some of the other things that we had done, you know. I don't think, we would be remiss in mentioning that we have a new employee handbook this year, which we had never had before, which is huge, I think, and very necessary in order to be able to make sure that we're providing that layer of communication with our staff, so, and then many other things as well, so, but this is a great overview thing.
Yeah. After you.
I was just going to say, one thing that a lot of people don't know, because, I mean, they watch the meetings, is I'm pretty sure people don't realize you get constant asks from five different people through email or texts, just, hey, what's going on with this? And people should just understand how responsive you are and how information does filter its way into meetings, and a good example would be looking at that biom imbalance. You know, that's something I brought up a couple of times, and it showed up in a meeting, and we got to have a good discussion about it, whether it worked out or not, but just people, I don't think people realize how much we hit you up. Sorry.
I just wanted to comment that we had the students of the month for May and June come to Rotary today, 12 kids, and every blessed one of them talked about the fantastic support from the people, you know, they talked about academics, they're all taking three, four, seven APs and all that, but what allowed them to be as successful as they have been is the variety of opportunities and the support that all of the people, coaches, teachers, advisors, and everything, provide. The word "support" came over time and time again, and I think that just validates the success that we're, you know, for all the effort that we're putting into social-emotional. And I think, I think it'll be more so even as we have strengthened at the elementary and middle school levels, but it's just so clear when you listen to the kids.
Okay.
All right, next step in the process.
Yeah, so next step, report number four this evening. This is just a proposed communication about my evaluation for the year. So one of the tasks of the school committee is to perform my evaluation. I've laid out a timeline that's just consistent with what we've done previously. It actually offers a little bit more time for you to complete this. What I would propose as a kind of a schedule for you is obviously, usually utilize some of the information in the year, year-end review report, so I did that this evening for you. As you take a look at that or if additional requests for information come up, certainly, you know, let me know as soon as you'd like to at the next meeting. But one of the things that you do on an annual basis is review what they, is prepare what they call my summative evaluation report. So you take a look at the progress we've made on goals, you need to give me different ratings and feedback on the various elements of the superintendent's performance rubric. So that's attached to this particular report. What I recommend to doing is, I will email this to you electronically tomorrow, as I've done previously. You take time actually compiling and completing the report, and what I recommend, again, if you're looking at this on a computer, it's color-coded, so if you actually provide the, let me see, yeah, any of the yellow and green require a rating. If you do the yellow first, then basic, because that's all the, like, the sub-detail, that kind of helps you determine what the overall rating in the green boxes is. It'll be pretty intuitive when you see it electronically. It's much easier to see in color, so I'll email it to you tomorrow. But you would do that, and then basically email this back to Dennis, the chairman, just copy to me for the compilation by June 11. What this does is actually gives you, you know, almost three weeks to be able to take a look at this, think about the data that I just presented, see if there's additional data or evidence that you would like. We can talk about it again at the next meeting on June 4, and then you still have a whole week after that to be able to compile your report and submit it to Dennis on the 11th. That would then give us enough time by the end of the week to calculate it, pull it all together. Under the new open meeting law, the chairman would actually take your individual reports and compile them based on the preponderance of the evidence. So he would take all your individual ratings and basically put together one summative report that ultimately gets shared with the school committee. Your individual evaluations are not public, so they're shared just individually between you and the chairman and you and me, because I need the feedback, but those do not individually get released to the public. The cumulative document that Dennis will put together is what'll be on the school committee agenda, and we're just proposing doing that on the 18th of June. Again, kind of wrapping up June, being able to spend the summer, talking about our goals and our setup for the next year. So I think, we actually, I did mention this to Dennis, this gives us an extra week even in doing the report that we did the last time. I'm happy to meet individually with members if they have questions, if, again, if you want to ask for additional information between now and the next meeting, you know, please do so. If you want to ask it at the next meeting, that's fine too. But if you have any lingering questions or concerns, or you'd like additional information or evidence, please let me know. I'm happy to put it together for you. One thing that I will do, I was just thinking about after we did the year-end review, in my goals for the year, obviously, the school committee has goals, I have goals, they're all tied to the strategic plan. Linda will present in a couple of minutes about some of the overarching pieces of the plan. I also had four, what we call professional practice goals, like four particular areas that I was working on for the year. I'm going to write you a little summary of those four areas, and I'll email that to you, just so you have it in advance, just to kind of give you my take on how I feel I did on those four particular focus areas, and, you know, why I think I'm, you know, there's a couple that I'm still working on that are going to carry into the next year. There's some that I think we really did a very good job on. There's sometimes when you get into a goal, you say, you know what, I set out to do this, but really it kind of changed, and this is what we ended up doing. So I'll provide you my feedback on those, and we can then have a discussion about them on the 4th or whenever you'd like, but I want to get you as much information as you have and need as you're doing this, so I'm open to whatever you would like.
Since I'm new to the process, if you don't mind, can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
First of all, I'd be evaluating, I've only been on the committee for a short period of time, but, so I was, would you consider that on the goals and what you're going to set forth on meeting the goals, or how you accomplish the goals and so on? Would that be your self-evaluation essentially to us? How would that work?
Yeah, I think, like, on those four professional practice goals, the operational goals, I think that you can actually kind of witness based on the reports that the school committee receives, even like the year-end summary, that's going to help you to fill out the overarching pieces. When it comes to, like, my specific professional practice goals, I think my write-up will assist you, because it'll tell you what I set out to do, what I actually did to try to accomplish it, and how I feel I either achieved or didn't achieve, or I'm still working on things. So I think that'll be helpful to you.
Yes, I would consider more that, you evaluating your own, yourself, so that's good.
It's not unlike the evaluation process that teachers go through.
Right.
Where they evaluate themselves and submit evidence, and then based on the observation the report is generated. So yours is almost identical, really, in many ways.
Yeah, it is, it's just you're getting evidence over the course of the year and interactions and different reports, but it's, the process is very similar.
What I would suggest, you know, look through all this, you know, kind of, see what you can make evaluations on, see what you have questions about, and then we have the whole next meeting. I think this is, we've given ourselves like a little bit more time than in the past, so that, you know, if you're like, I don't know if I can really, I don't know how to rate them here, and then we can ask questions, or you can have a meeting with superintendent. When you do make your ratings, if you, if you think there's something exemplary, feel free to make comments. If you think there's something that needs to, feel free to make comments. I think that helps. I think if you just check boxes, sometimes it doesn't really mean anything, but, you know, if you follow that up with, why do I think that was exemplary? Why do I think he needs improvement in that? That helps, you know, it helps superintendent, it helps, and also helps in writing the summative report, so, you know, those type of things.
As a, just a, sort of a follow-up, I guess, we also have to do our self-evaluation, so we should think about doing that at some point.
Yeah, I have that on, like, probably on July 1 to try to do it then, to do a committee self-evaluation, yeah. Absolutely. All right, so any questions, other questions on the evaluation?
I won't be here for the next meetings if I have any meeting, uh, questions, I'm just going to email.
Yeah, would you just email me? I'll email you back, yeah.
Yeah, and you'll be back for the latter one though, right?
I'm just going to be gone for the 4th, right?
Yeah, here on the 18th, I think, right?
Yeah, I'll be back for the 18th, yeah.
Okay, we'll be back by the 11th, was the 11th is the time to mail it in?
Oh, I'll have it done before then.
Okay.
Because it's electronic, yeah, I'll have that all, yeah, yeah, no, it'll absolutely be done.
All right, very good.
Good, thank you. Next, I'm going to ask Linda to share some of the highlights from the strategic plan with you. She's very excited about this, so I'll turn it over.
I am very excited. I'm very excited about this thing. Couple of things, I do see some discrepancies. One of them, I apparently told you there would be a blank program, it's the FOS program, I'll fill that in, and there are some pagination errors here, and I think when I turned it into a PDF, I didn't have it with an automated pagination, so I will make sure that that gets updated, and you're not missing pages, in other words. So like Dr. Lang said, we do have the strategic plan, it has the three overarching goals, which is every student achieving academically, every student supported in a positive pro-social learning environment, and then aligned financial and facility resources to support the strategic plan, because it all sells, sounds well and good, and if you don't have the money or the backing to be able to do some of these things, that's an important piece. So you do have the larger document with a little bit more detail with the narrative. I'm just going to highlight and try and summarize some of this. There is a lot of technical pieces to it, a lot of acronyms that we tried to spell out, and I'll be more than happy to answer those questions as we go along. So we're just going to start off with the first goal, and this is the academic goal. Typically, what happens with the academic goal is, there's one content area that you need to put a specific focus on. So for example, when the new standards came in in 2011, there was a high priority for math and English, because we needed to get new aligned documents, we need to make sure that the teachers were understanding what their new standards would look like, and then how are we going to assess that. So as that morphed into then science, which is now the focus, which is the next generation science standards, it did take a while for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to actually vote on the standards, so there was this lag time of maybe a year, year and a half, that nobody wanted to move forward with alignment, purchasing, purchasing the supports for it, because if they changed something, then we would have been with, you know, outdated material and material that we couldn't work with. So now there's that shift, and we're moving forward, obviously, with the science. Elementary is the level that tends to receive the most support, because they're teaching off for subject areas, and they're still trying to get their legs under them from some of the other pieces, as well as now adding the science component, and there is only six hours in a school day, so we have to get some of that work done. So what has happened is the social, the history and social science standards have come out, and working together with the social studies coordinator, which is Stephanie Quinn, and John Morris, they have been working with Kelly Rogers and also Abby Dick to try and incorporate the lessons together and integrate the curriculum. So for example, your nonfiction text would then be coming from the science and the social studies, rather than, we have plenty of stories, we have plenty of curriculum, but why, you know, it's not about covering, it's about getting what they need. So they've been doing a lot of that work, and what you'll notice is that we've referred to what's called the ECOS, which is the essential course of study for our, and we call those pacing guides, and they're getting together with all the grade levels, representation from all the schools in order to put in inquiry-based learning, which is the, basically, the key to science and social studies, and able to link those curriculums together. So that's taking, you know, a tremendous amount of work, however, the teachers are, you know, excited for it, because they're not, they're trying not to put things in, like, piles, right, like, okay, this, it's time for science, it's time for reading, it's time for writing, everything should be integrated, as it always has been. And that is also for fifth and sixth grade too, because they're still in the elementary mode, even though they're in a different school. And one of the goals was to make sure that we could get all of our information in one place, so we are fully moving over to a Google platform, and we have what's called Team Drive. So all of that information is available, no more, oh, can you send me that email? Where's this information? We're putting everything in one spot, which is terrific, because, you know, even if as people change, we have something to provide for our teachers that are new to the district. We can put them someplace and say, hey, take a look at this, you can move forward with it. So that's been, you know, a big push for us. One of the other things we've been working on is just even our assessments and our grading procedures that go along. We don't have a, you know, a set grading criteria for teachers. One of the things you'll see is that we're moving towards the standards-based report cards, which would then actually tease out the difference between standard learning and then what is the academics that go around that for the behaviors or habits of mind. People call them different things, behaviors that promote school success. So that's helping us align that process, where the departments are working seven through 12 in order to come up with some common grading practices to help students, so it's not just, depending on who you have for a teacher, what it's going to look like. So you'll see some of those changes as we go along. One of the other things too is we talk about different accommodations. We have the district accommodation plan, it's called the D cap, so it's part of our curriculum, and all students can have access to this. So this is one of those documents that we use quite frequently, and one of the other things that we're working on is, as an admin team, we're working on evaluation to try and gather, like, look fours for classrooms, so we'll be looking for these accommodations, we'll be looking for the look fours, making sure we're trying to get consistent with our evaluation process, not just to do the evaluation process, but to provide very specific feedback to teachers, because that's really the purpose of that, of the evaluation process, is to help them, you know, get better at their craft. And one of the other things that we were working on too, and I believe this is one of your, part of one of your goals, is we now have 10 more approved classes for dual enrollment at Chelmsford High School that will be offered for next school year, so that, we're excited about that. It's in, you know, obviously, math, English, science. We have early childhood three, we have business classes, we have some of our other elective courses that have been approved, and as we put, start scheduling our students, we'll start putting them through that process. So in addition to the other ones we started with, we now have 10 more, so we're super excited about that piece. And this is obviously the first year for implementation fully with iReady. So iReady is K to eight, we've been doing a pilot with it, and now we've provided all the professional development for our teachers. We're pulling, we're using it fully with all classrooms. We'll still provide professional development for the teachers as we go along, because you can't just do it once and then, you know, hopefully everything works out, and it's really been very helpful, not only just to group students together to try and identify where they're, where they need to close the gap, it's helped us too, like, even placement for students, or even working with parents that aren't sure how their students are doing, and should we provide them with services, should we not provide them with services? So it's another data point, instead of waiting around for your state testing, which is a summative piece, this allows us to actually work with students before we get to a summative piece. And it also has what we call like the building blocks or the intervention pieces to it, where if a student doesn't understand something, there are specific lessons that teachers can use in a blended learning environment, hence the one-to-one initiative, which will then allow more devices for students to be able to access these pieces. So we're very, you know, very, very excited about that, and that's our first goal, so it's an academic goal. It doesn't mean we're not working on some of the other things, it's just we need to put the focus and the resources towards this. So we have the alignment, and then also we have the funds for teacher, for our administrators to get for teachers the actual pieces that they need, like the nonfiction texts and any curriculum adoption piece. So for sixth grade, just so you know, they are using FOS, I put in there blank, must have been my holding spot, and I forgot about it. And then what you'll see is the state gave the districts the ability to either spiral the curriculum or keep it departmentalized with, you know, life, you do life, you do earth, life and, you know, and, and physical science. So John Morris has been, you know, we've been going back and forth, like, what's the best thing to do? It's hard when you actually get the decision to make. And what we thought would be the best is the layering part, or spiraling for grades five and six. So we're going to be doing earth, physical, and life science for five and six. What we noticed is that there's a common theme of physical science all the way through. So for grade seven, they are life science, however, they will pull in the physical science as well, so it's not the third. And then when they get to eighth grade, it will be earth science with the physical science in there. So it's almost like a dual approach to it, but we thought that that would be best, and that will set the students up quite nicely as they matriculate into the high school. And one of the other adoption pieces, and because we're not at the end of the school year, even though it's three weeks, we've been reminded, the biology teachers are looking to adopt new curriculum to support their biology piece. And that is one of, that's what we test the students in MCAS, so they'll make that final decision, and we have the funds to support them for that. So that's goal one. For goal two, it's a pretty lengthy goal, and there's a lot of pieces to it that overlap. So I'm gonna do my best to summarize it for you, because this is where a lot of those acronyms come into play. So, couple of years ago, we started with the whole SEL initiative, where we had a district-level team. So it's the MTSS district team that we work together. I sit on that team, Dr. Lang sits on that team, we have representation from all the schools, and we have our consultants, as well as Lorraine Wilson and Katie Sims. And this is kind of the governing board. Underneath that, at each school, they have what's called MTSS teams, or you might hear them call it PBIS if it's at the elementary level. That's the teams of teachers at that level that are working on the larger initiative. So we're thinking of the governing board, what supports do they need, how are we going to implement this? So then they have their MTSS teams with facilitators, and the purpose of those facilitators are to set the agendas, to make sure that the action items are followed through, because when, if you went around to the different schools, they're at different places. You know, some are a little bit ahead, some are just starting with tier one pieces. So we make sure that those teams are in place and give them the support and the professional development that goes with it. So we work with our two consultants. One is more of a focus on an elementary approach, where we have another one that comes in for the secondary, because they are completely different entities in how they approach students and the supports that those students need. So what we've been doing is providing them with all the professional development, all the support, these teams are making decisions. But when they're making these decisions, including ourselves, we're using these different assessments, right? So how are we, how are we knowing how we're doing as a group? So you'll see that there are several assessments that I referenced in here, which is the tiered fidelity inventory, and it's just that, like, what are we doing? Are we able to do it? Or are we just saying we're doing it? Like, how is this happening? So we all take that assessment to say, yes, I believe we're doing it, no, I don't believe we're doing it, and then that helps us come up, like, really call out what is it that we're trying to do.
So there's really two threads that are running through this entire strategic plan, at least one and two, which is, how are we training our teachers, how are we teaching our kids?
Exactly.
Okay.
So, but you need something to decide how are you doing it, right?
Right, exactly.
So that, that's, are we, are we doing what we said we would do? And then there's the school assessment survey, where they're looking for, for growth, and if we're doing it, how is it working, right? Or is it not working? Or is it working, and do we need to go to the next step? So you have these two different assessments that, that you need to actually do at the beginning of the, in the school, at the end of the year. The district team has to do it, the schools have to do it, so that you have enough data to make those final decisions. And then there's also the collaborative team checklist. So, fine, we're doing these things, we're not doing these things, how are we doing it together, right? Are we really having the conversations, are we having the meetings? So it's a, it's a really concerted effort to make sure we have scheduled dates, not just when are you available. These dates are all set at the beginning of school year, everybody's calendars are front-loaded, they're sacred times, this is when we're supposed to be making these decisions. And then there's the actual implementation of it at the school level, along with the PD, based on what they need. So you'll see, most schools are in a good shape for tier one, we have some schools that are ready for tier two. And tier two is when a student isn't, tier one's for all students. If a student is unable to do it, whether it's academically or socially, emotionally, what's the next step? How do we give them more, right? And you can think of tier three as a student still isn't able to do it, what are we giving, providing them for services, or what are we providing more for them? So teachers are really working to get to that tier two piece within their schools. And I'll tell you, it's, it's been not, I won't say seamless, but the, it's been really embraced at all the schools. You'll see all these different things that people are working on, and then they share the information. So it's not just, oh, we're working on, like, the passport system. You saw Molly McMahon here talking about that. Okay, well, that, that's working great for you, how can I use it in my school? So I, we're very fortunate that not only they're a good collective team, they, they're very good at sharing their information.
So it's, it's your supports at, at tier one and two, in terms of the SEL, but also in terms of the D cap?
Right.
Okay.
Right, right, because that's the academic piece. I mean, there are certain combinations you can make for all students.
Right.
And they go hand in hand. It's not like it's time for SEL, it's time for academics. Students can't access academics if they are not emotionally safe in a school. Adults, it's not even just students. If you're not emotionally safe, you're not accessing what's happening. So those actually go hand in hand, but there are different components to it.
Right.
And there's different team members that may be part of that. So it's, it's a, it's a good mix. So we do have coordinators, we do have building principals, and we have district-level people to try and make these decisions. And that's our job to support it.
Right.
And I will talk a little bit about the financial piece afterwards. So we're providing them on team days, we make sure that they have the substitutes they need, so it's not a who's available. Everybody has access to these team days, we're providing the supports also in the summertime. So we pull these teams together, it's not as if school starts and then we say, oh geez, what are we gonna do? They have the time to sit back and really process. This is what we think we should be doing, let's look at the data, the data says we should be working on this, and then they can move forward with it. The other piece you'll see is, there's two different behavioral pieces that the school, that the middle, the two elementary schools are definitely using. One of them's Swiss, right? So Swiss is, one's a program, and then the other one's through Google Forms, so we're trying to figure out which is the best. But that's basically your office referrals, so whether it's major or minor incidences. So the first work we had to do with everybody is, what is a major incident and what is a minor incident? My idea compared to your idea might be completely different.
Desi has their own idea.
And Desi has their own idea, but we're gonna work with, you know, our kids that we have in front of us, but we, that was the first part of the work that was done at the school level. Now that they have an idea of their major or minor incidences, they can log this information, and that data helps them. So, for example, if you saw a lot of office referrals, kids being sent down to the office, and it happens, ah, right after third grade lunch, let's just say, right, we'll pick something, guess what? You have to have some type of intervention for after third grade lunch, because something's not right. Or if it's transition times, or if it's before school, after school, because behavior always has an antecedent and a consequence, and those are the only two things you'd have to change in order to, to make a behavior change. Typically, we try to go with the antecedent, we don't want, we don't like to go to the consequence piece. So if you really have the data to tell you exactly and pinpoint it, you can put a plan in place, and if it works, great, continue it. If not, try something different, because it's not gonna get any better.
So is Swiss a completely separate system from, say, a conduct referral in X two?
Yes. So middle school uses X two, and they use the conduct referral piece. That's just more appropriate for them, it gives them flat data.
Okay.
But that data is what they, they, they're using for now, what they feel comfortable with, and it then goes up into the high school level, because we wanna see if a student is escalating as they, as they go through the system. And that is the best system for it. Elementary feels better with a, with a program like Swiss, or you, the use of the Google Forms to gather that information. They don't wanna put kids in a position where, if they've had an incident, you have one incident, it's now sitting in your conduct tab, and maybe it happened to you in third grade, and now you're in sixth grade, and maybe you have another incident that's not related. They just don't want kids to get, you know, marked.
Labelled.
Labelled as, oh wow, this kid had one incident. It happens. Every student has some type of an incident at some point, so they didn't want it to follow all the way through. It's okay, you're doing good right now, just one incident. Well, see, we can, we can actually pinpoint that now. So that is the, the different systems that they're using. One of the other things that we've been working on, in that, now, this Swiss program wouldn't work, obviously, for what I'm gonna talk about, but anything, we're trying to funnel all of our information into X two. And through X two, we can then create the dashboards, and we can call all of our information to one place, instead of looking it up here, putting in this password over there, asking somebody if they have a file over there. I, I have some examples, and I'll show them to you, and I can certainly submit it. These are just mockups. And what we're trying to do is get these dashboards, so I can look at the district overview, a teach, or I could look at a school, we could look teacher, we could drill it down to a student, right? So everybody would have different permissions, and I can pass that around, so you can take a peek at, you know, some of the work that's being done. That's, that has nothing, that's all the technology department, I have to give them all the credit, and especially Paul Waidell, he has been the point person. And not only are they trying to build this for us, they're trying to learn about it. We, we've had some sit downs, like, what is Fontes-Suppanell? What would that look like? Because they're trying to make sure that they can fine-tune it for us, rather than have a, a completely separate system. So we try to move everything into X two, so we can have a full picture on attendance, behavior data, academic data, and anything else that we can put in there, so we can really look at a child, a class, a school, a district.
So is it, is it flexible enough for us to be able to do that?
It is, and you, and some, you'll see some of the redacted pieces, we just pulled some examples from the classes in there, but it is, it's pretty flexible. It's what you build in, and he's created a whole server designated to this. And what we'll have to decide on is how often we're gonna have, it's not like in real time. So, for example, if somebody puts something in, you're not gonna get that, oh, they were absent this day. But we would make a decision, are we running it every week, are we running it every two weeks, once a month? What, what is it that we need for data? Is it after every benchmark that we have? So we'll have to, as we get these and take a look at them, to see what's best, and whose permissions, and who's looking at what. We'll have to decide how often we wanna populate it, because it's only populated by information going into it. But if it's in one spot, it makes more sense. And, you know, X two is a student management system, it wasn't necessarily built for some of these components, but if you take from those components, you're able to make your own dashboard program.
Yeah, I think it's a good student, I think it's a good system management.
Mm-hmm.
You know.
And that's what it's made for.
Right. But you're right, I think if you're looking at individual students, that plus a lot more.
Right, right. It will take anything that's electronic.
Right.
So that's just kind of the summary of what's happening. We're also working towards, we have second step as our social-emotional curriculum. Some schools are a little bit ahead with that. So, for example, South Rose started that a while ago. We've always had second step, and I think over time, maybe it went away, so we resurrected it, brought it back. And that's really the, the common language that's happening in the classrooms and in the schools, when they're speaking with students, expectations that are out there. So there's some really great modules within second step that the teachers are going through, and we're gonna probably implement some of it at the middle school level, and maybe perhaps another program, but it depends on the developmental level of the students. You need them to have, you know, buy-in, you can't do some of the little cutesy things that maybe you do at the elementary level with the seventh and eighth grade students, they kinda look at you funny. So that work is happening, and the schools are continuing on with second step at their schools, and we'll continue with that.
How's that dovetail with PBIS?
It's the same thing. So it's the, it's the, like, how do you handle a situation, right? Or what's the language? And you can talk about where you are emotionally. So it's PBIS to say, you know, is this, are you agreeing? I mean, it kind of goes in with some of the zones of regulation. It looks like you're, you know, it looks like you're a little bit in the red zone or in the yellow zone, perhaps you could take some time for yourself. So it has those pieces in there that the teachers can talk to the students, and even talk to themselves, so that when they go to the next grade level, the same language will be there. Hallway expectations, you know, typically you'll find a lot of the, it's, behavior tends to escalate in an unstructured environment. So it is your transitions. It could be your lunch, right? So that's what you saw at the, at the elementary level, they flipped, and they have recess first and then coming for lunch, to try and expend some of that energy. And then they can sit down and have more of a, a quiet lunch, and have a conversation, instead of the reverse. And then when they go back into the classroom, they're not coming in spinning.
As we're looking at that transition from, because we have, all the elementary schools going to two middle schools.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, I'm like, yeah.
So, but, so, I mean, are they all kinda coming with the same language into the middle schools now?
They are.
Okay. And then the middle schools are picking up on that language and moving them forward?
Correct.
All right.
And I understand just what, what Donna asked is a very important thing, but what's, because we're all at different levels, or at different points in the different elementaries, at what point can we say truly the system is implemented at all of the elementaries? And so the data that we're looking at is across the board in our district. So in other words, when I'm looking at this data about one particular school.
Mm-hmm.
If a system has already been implemented there for the past year, versa, or two years, let's say, and then I'm looking at the data two years later, and it's only been implemented for one year at the other schools.
Mm-hmm.
How is that, how can I compare this, or how can I really, how, how does that help students equally at each one of these schools? I don't think it does.
So if you're talking more of the SEL piece, it's, it's really about the individual schools and groups, right? We're not, the academic data, we have enough academic data to be able to do the compare and contrast, look at the different standards. But if you're looking at more of just the SEL data that's coming through, whether they've had two years, one year, it's really, you're looking at a student as a whole. So one year is not gonna suddenly, we're not looking to say, oh, we have, you know, thirty-five hundred students in elementary level, how many of them have office referrals? I'm not looking at, at a group. Altogether, I'm looking at an individual student, or a class, or a situation. So the SEL data, you wouldn't be doing as much comparing and contrasting, that's very specific to a school, or for a class, or for a student. And every school has a different makeup too, right? So even the structure of a classroom, some people have two levels to it, some people have one level to it, so their issues could happen, say, for McCarthy, they have the four corners, but Parker doesn't have that, they have a third level that goes downstairs. So typically, we don't look at SEL data across the district to do some type of comparison for those schools. We're trying to give every school the support that they need. And I feel like that's gonna be very fluid, based on the school, based on the students. To answer your original part of the question was, it's probably gonna take us about two more years to have everybody doing the same thing, right? So they piloted this, this group's going to tier two, everybody else is gonna be exploring tier two. Tier three is tier three. I mean, it, make no mistake, students are receiving some pretty specialized services there. So within a year, those groups will be working on tier two. And then, based on how the students are doing for that current year, or the new makeup of students, you might be going back to tier one pieces. So it's gonna be this moving piece.
You actually have programming for your tier three. You may have programming in place already for your tier.
We do.
Three kids, like your strive program.
Correct.
And, and the programs at the middle and high school as well.
Right. And the goal is, if you can front-load, especially the younger kids, and as they move on, you, you should see this consistency. Not sure if I'm answering your question, but I wouldn't necessarily be looking for this data to do a comparison across the district. When I'm looking at the district data, what it would do is allow me to look as an overview of how many people are in school, how many, like, we have a lot of absenteeism happening that's going on. And then the school would be looking at their piece, and then we're looking at a specific student to pull out all of their academic data. I'd be looking at the academic data for this piece. I can drill down to say, how many, how are our kids doing for Fontes-Suppanell? That's something I would wanna look across the district, because that's something that's very specific, and it's, has a specific standard to it.
Right.
I'm a human, I don't, I might change this year, I need this support, next year I might need another support.
Yeah, that's kinda what it is, a little bit rigid as a system.
Yeah.
You really have to, you know, look at a lot of different aspects, right?
Right.
For an individual student. So this would hardly give you a whole picture, you know.
Well, if, if you can pull up a whole student, if I pull up one student, I probably would see all their academics, I'd be able to see their, if they've been attending school, if there's a, a conduct issue, to make that decision. So, oh wow, this kid gets all A's, but they have, you know, twenty office referrals. Well, guess what? We're gonna be doing a behavioral intervention.
Right, right. But we may not know what the cost, you know what I'm saying? And that's where the other piece is gonna come in.
Correct.
Okay.
So for goals one and two, that's the overview. I'm gonna have Dr. Lang talk a little bit about goal three, because with all of these pieces come the, you know, financial and, and physical support necessary for these things to happen, such as the strive program in our buildings.
Yeah, and I won't belabor this, because we, we talked previously a little bit about goal three. And the third goal really is just alignment of our first two goals, is the work that we're doing in budgeting aligned to support our academic and our social-emotional needs. Our, you know, when we take a look at our, our physical structure of our schools, are we setting ourselves up in such a fashion that our schools are supporting the type of programming that we wanna provide in the short and the long term? And I think to that, a couple of examples would be, you know, we realized that there may be some deficiencies, So we went out and had the door, what do you study done? We spent this last year going through that study and the recommendations and actually prioritizing them. We put together a ten-year plan to actually implement those phased-in approaches so that our facilities are aligned to support the different programming that we've decided we want to, uh, implement in the district. On the more budgeting and funding standpoint, do the decisions that we make in the budget support the academic and the social emotional needs of the district? And I think that they do. I think when you look at the, um, the areas of academics that we've, uh, implemented, you know, we have reinstated, say, coordinators. When it comes to SEL, uh, you know, we've, um, kind of retooled the coordinator for SEL and school counseling services. We've added in stipends for the MTSS coaches in the buildings. We've allocated budget dollars to be able to support the consultants to come in and work with our teams in the building to build capacity within the district to eventually be able to pass that off to district staff to continue to implement in the years to come. Um, so the third goal is really operationalizing the first two goals of the plan. And, um, a lot of those different elements I referenced already when we did the year-end review, so I don't wanna, um, belabor it. But, um, I think again, it's just timely in the context of we're finishing here two of, of a three-year plan. Um, I think we've, again, we've accomplished a lot. Next year, we're gonna be kind of charting that course for the, um, you know, the next three to five years to, to come. We'll need to redo a needs assessment, you know, where are we at, where do we want to go? Um, but we're positioning ourselves in, in the right place. And I think over the last two years, we really have positioned ourselves with our facilities to be in good shape in the years to come. Again, there's an element that we're gonna need MSBA support, both in the smaller projects and the larger projects. We're gonna need to, um, utilize town capital, uh, to implement some of our shorter-term projects. Uh, but we have a roadmap and we've all, we've talked about that. That's another item that we'll actually do a little bit, spend a little time on in June or July. Kind of re-acclimating ourselves with the facilities plan, where we're at, how all the different elements come into play. But, um, I think that's actually, um, that goal is really supporting, uh, the first two of the district, the academic and the SEL.
And then prior, like you had said, prior that to letting the, okay, three years has happened, let's start again. We'll be taking this next year to then push this out to see what are the, gonna be the next steps so that you have this continuum. It's not, we just stop and then we take a year to, well, let's see what we want to do next. You have to be a year ahead making the plans. So that would be the work of our admin group to then make those next steps, uh, and find out where we're at, what needs to continue, and what's next.
That was gonna be a question, when are you gonna start in the next?
Yeah, so we've already contacted, you know, people that we work with and that we start with the admin group. So that work should start this summer at our summer retreat. And then what we have is we have monthly admin meetings beyond, um, like the whole group gets together. And that's how this all came to be for this, this piece of the strategic plan. Because there was a small gap because the original strategic plan was five years. It was completed in four. And now we were like, well, okay, what are we supposed to do? So rather than have a gap, the group will get together and that will be the work for the whole, for the whole school year, for our administrative meetings and next steps.
I think the other, like internally, we'll work on that. I think we have this opportunity for, like even when we're talking about our school committee forums for next year, what we want them to be, maybe we could target some to try to get some public input on, you know, direction of the district, parent feedback. Um, we could talk about doing some surveys. Over the course of the summer, when it's a little quieter, we can, you know, kind of see what other districts have done along those lines too. Um, and, you know, one of our, you know, my goals for the next year will be, is to kind of lay out that plan for you with all those different elements. So we'll be working on that this summer, but.
No, as I was looking at this, I was actually thinking about a, a parent forum topic. Um, because, you know, I'm looking at this and I find this very helpful. But I think every parent's fear, um, and sometimes a teacher's fear too, is, uh, you know, it's all about the data, right? It's all about the numbers. And, uh, you know, we make really good decisions based on the numbers, but we don't, we don't lose sight of the kid. You know what I'm saying? So I think that sometimes when we hear about MCAT scores and, you know, all of these kinds of things, we think that education has become completely data-driven. Um, and, and it, it really isn't completely data-driven. It's child-centered with data that helps guide the process. And I, I think, um, maybe, maybe that can be one of the things that we would talk about, um, as part of one of our parent forums. Uh, because, you know, I think everybody gets a little nervous sometimes if it comes down to an MCAT score or, or something like that, or, or this, you know? And it doesn't.
It doesn't, yeah.
I mean, I guess I actually look at that and say, you know, as a teacher in a classroom, I would love to have all of these different data points about the students in front of me in one place.
Absolutely.
And you know yourself, you might have to go to X two to get something, you might have to go to, um, get a Fontis Penel school somewhere, you know, all over the place.
This is what it looks like.
This product is basically, it's like a homegrown application we're developing that is basically pulling all these different data points into a package. Um, that just visually will give the, the teacher all this information at one time. So it's really helping.
Absolutely.
And it's, I think it's actually gonna lead to less people honing in on one particular score or one particular element in allowing you to kind of see the full profile of the student. And then we can actually look at some of the data and figure out behind the scenes. All right, if we're seeing a particular, um, um, score in a particular range or if someone has this score in the MCATs and, you know, they're getting this score in an I-ready exam because now it's all together, we want to somehow kind of flag that student that maybe they need some, uh, type of additional intervention or whatnot. Um, so we're, we're just trying to actually pull it all together so it's a little bit easier to, to see. Um, not allow people to kind of fall through the cracks because you're gonna have all these data, data elements in one place. Um, but actually use that as almost a roadmap to kind of help the teacher figure out what type of, uh, services or interventions students may need.
I really like that. I mean, I really do. And I would find it incredibly helpful.
It's not intended to target anyone.
No, not at all.
Provide information.
But also, and, or to depersonalize the whole process of educating a child. It's not just about the data. And I think, you know, this is, and, and you know, and I get that, you know? But as I said, I think that a lot of, um, what we hear about in education today is scores and data. And, you know, I, I think that we want to make sure that we emphasize to people, and as I said, maybe a good topic for a forum in the future is, you know, how does this help us, you know, um, to guide, you know, interventions, instruction, you know, um, PD, all of these types of things? And it doesn't become depersonalized.
Right.
You know, um, it actually is very helpful.
Right.
So I think what my question was going towards, and I maybe didn't verbalize it really well, is throughout the year, what I've been seeing a lot happening in terms of the social emotional component of, you're the goal that I said here, most of it has been implemented basically at one school, South Row.
No. All the schools have, all the schools have implemented all tier one. Um, South Row is using Swiss, but so isn't, um, Biim, where the other two schools are using the Google piece. South Row and Biim are ready to go to tier two, but that doesn't mean that the other schools will start for next year. They're ready, they're just one step ahead that way, but it's not just South Row.
So let's, they're not all at the same level in terms of implementing the, the program?
They've all used, they're all using second step. And they're all using, uh, they all have tier one interventions.
Okay. Just wanted to, my, my question is, is geared towards this. If we're starting to collect data and we're starting to build a profile of an individual student based on the data that we're putting in here, and if all of the students do not yet have access to, um, the type of behavioral modification or, um, corrective measures that everybody else does, so they all should have access to the same thing in order for us to truly evaluate each student. So my concern is if we're entering data in some schools and they're not yet doing all this versus entering it in other schools that are, then I don't think it's, it's fair to everyone.
Yeah, all students receive tier one. So tier one is for all. Tier two, you don't want a lot of students in a tier two or tier three piece. Um, what it's doing is it's really identifying what, do they really need it? And then what is it that they need, right? Because it's not something different. It's usually something more. They just need a little bit more of that. So there could be some, uh, additional intervention time maybe called out. But that's gonna be dependent on the school and the students and the working with the teachers, right? Because we're talking about different people, but am I not?
No, I was just gonna say, um, we're not taking the, kind of the behavioral data across the four elementary schools and comparing that among the four schools.
Right.
So.
Academic we are.
Academic, this is academic. So the behavioral, like, let's say, South Row, and I'm just saying off the top of my head, they might really be putting an emphasis this year on, um, you know, common behaviors and, um, you know, acting appropriately within, you know, halls and hallways and the cafeteria, like, expectations. That might be something South Row is doing because they had a particular issue. Biim might be observing, um, uh, things that they want to work on in the playground. So like recess or things like that. So we would really be working with, say, Biim to see if the interventions that they're putting in place are helping around their specific behavioral data that they're seeing. We wouldn't compare that to South Row because South Row might be working on a different, um, element. Um, so we're not looking across all four schools at the behavioral piece. I think it's, this data here takes a look at, um, some of the academic pieces. Like, say, all four of our schools are implementing I-ready. So they all have the I-ready assessment. That's a data element that we might look at across all four schools. But we're not looking at like behaviors across all four schools to see if they're consistent.
So I misunderstood this, uh, in terms of we're not tracking the behavioral component of it.
No, they, uh, they're tracking it within their school. We're not comparing because we don't have common elements to compare against all four schools.
Right. You're talking about, you're talking about different buildings, different setups, building, different students.
I think we use the words conduct and behavior interchangeably.
Mm-hmm.
So a conduct referral is different than a behavioral intervention. Do you get what I'm saying? So, um, we, I, that's where part of the confusion may come.
You get a school, you get an office referral because I had an incident with John on the playground. I pushed him, right?
Oh, you, John.
But then, well, you know, he was good. I do it again. I'm doing it again. I'm doing it again. I'm doing it. I, I might not be dealing with the, you know, typical, okay, hands and feet to yourself, we're looking for people that are behaving, whatever the, what we would do for all students. I might need a very specific intervention because I'm shoving kids on the playground. And what, what works for most students is not working for me. So I might need to work with, uh, maybe like a, a lunch group, right? There may be there's other kids that are working on this. So I might be working on a lunch group to learn the skills that are necessary. Maybe I don't have the social skills that are necessary.
It's a sensory issue. You're just.
Right. And that's what I'm saying is that every student, it's gonna be different. And that's why you have to really look at it. Um, you know, I'm looking at something like this, this district overview when this was just attendance. We don't have an attendance issue. So, poof, okay, good. There's not, that's not something, I'm not gonna put a whole intervention in on getting to school, right? That's not what the student needs. Um, they might need something completely different.
And, and I think that's what I was trying to get at, um, about, you know, um, not, not allowing the data to depersonalize the student. Because there is going to be this social emotional learning aspect that we have to take into account too that can be really hard to collect data on because each student is so different and will have their own set of issues. You know, depending on so many factors that we have no control over.
Like a school might be looking at overall data for behavior. Um, let's just say that they've noticed a particular grade level or a particular class. They, they're looking at it to provide the support. I don't know, I'm a new teacher. Maybe my classroom management needs some, I need some training, I need PD in it. That's very specific PD that we can provide the teacher, which would then be the actual intervention to maybe curb the behavior of the students that may be misbehaving in that class or grade. So schools would be looking at it to say, well, why is it that we're getting so many office referrals from second grade? What's, what's going on in second grade? Oh, wow, we didn't realize that they're all, you know, getting smushed into one hallway and a lot of shoving happens and all of that. What, we have to, we have to have better dismissal procedures, right? So that's the, they would be comparing to make sure that they're providing what's needed. But we wouldn't be looking back being like, oh, wow, look at that Biim, you had way more op, I, I can't fix that. I, that, that doesn't help me, right? I'm not gonna be able to help them. That's really for them, for that behavior, those office referrals, um, to come up with some type of intervention for a group, a class, a grade, or an individual student.
And the data input, input points is at the principal level? What, what happens here?
It is. It's at the principal level. And, um, you know, usually you have people that are, uh, uh, authorized to be with behavior, which be school psychologists here, B-CBA. Um, one of the things that they were talking about is that if we have these facilitators, right? So here's somebody who's, um, acting like a lead teacher, we might have to put in some permissions and sign-offs that they are okay to be accessing student data, right? Because we have student data regulations that are in place.
So in, for example, for me, I can only see the kids that are on my caseload, like in my classes.
Right.
I can't see any student in the school.
A school psychologist should see every student.
I understand about the viewing, but let's say in terms of inputting the data. Okay, so, um, Dennis went to the office today and, uh, he was referred by teacher number or whatever. And who's inputting that that actually happened that day?
It's usually a combination. Sometimes you have, it depends on the, like, level. So elementary, the principal might be putting in him because they're gonna work with that student. The B-CBA might be putting it in. It might be with the, I don't thi, the office clerks are not putting that information and it's usually at the principal level.
And that really, and the reason I say this is because I've been, I, I've seen many people working on various studies and entering data points. And you can totally skew what's going on by, uh, just saying, oh, yeah, I'll forget entering the items for today. So, um, I, I think it's, it's important to, uh, have controls over who's actually gonna be okay to enter all this data consistently.
At the, um, and at the middle school and high school level, it's usually with the principal, assistant, whoever's dealing with the behavior. It goes in the conduct tab for them to have the information. And, and there's different behaviors, right? There's different codes that go along with behaviors that would go into a management system.
I like this plan. I, I was gonna say, I like this plan a lot. And, and as we're discussing this, I think it does kind of highlight, um, you know, um, for us, you know, some of the questions, uh, that people who may be reading the report may have. Um, and also it may direct us as we go forward, you know, how to maybe clarify some things so that, um, you know, we're making that distinction uh, between, um, uh, the data report that you have there and more of the, um, uh, the tiered levels of intervention.
Right, right. I mean, it, it's important to just have these different, I mean, I've had many conversations, uh, students not doing well in my class. Why? They can't do anything. I'm like, really? Let me, I pull up the academic data. I'm like, well, this kid is, is rocking it. Oh, it's a behavior issue. Or, it's like, oh, really? Like, why are they getting a, a grade in this class of this? Are you grading them based on effort and behavior or are you grading them on what they actually can learn? Because those are two different, totally different elements.
Absolutely. And I think, you know, this just highlights how complicated education has become. And what a good job we have to do in terms of really making sure that the information is clear. Because as a teacher, I find it overwhelming. As a parent, I couldn't even imagine trying to, you know, uh, go through this and understand what it means.
Right.
Um, and I think that we, you know, we have an obligation to make sure that, that the people in the community, you know, understand kind of how this all fits together and works and drives the decisions around, uh, um, social emotional learning, you know, academic, um, achievement, curriculum development, all of these things.
And I'd like to see it in one place. It's hard when you have this and you're like, well, wait a minute, was this, was it this, was it that? To have it in one place is, it's convenient.
Yes.
Obviously. And it, and it's relevant. It doesn't give anybody the, the ability to be like, wow, I didn't have time to look that up. It, no, it's right, here it is. It's right here. Let's, let's take a look at it and let's make a decision around that rather than I think, I feel, I want.
Right.
All right. Well, thank you for, uh, going through all that.
Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to ask too.
Point of order. Um, would any of the other members have an objection if I were to leave early? I have to pick up my kids from my grandparents' house, well, their grandparents' house, not my grandparents', but. Uh, I wanted to kind of get through strategic plan and through the yearly review.
There's anything we have to vote on?
Yeah, is there any other votes?
It's really just updates.
Just informational. Um, I'll catch up on the rest of the meeting. Um, I just, I have a conflict. So, and I don't want my, I don't want their grandparents.
Does the data say that you need to pick the child up?
The wife has told me.
Okay, all right. She's checking. I don't know if there's a data point for that.
So I would like to go do that. So thank you for the updates and I appreciate the, uh.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Oh, look, you feel better. I'm really doing this for Donna.
All right. Um, next report on the agenda, I will actually ask, um, Joanna to, to review with you. Uh, this is just a follow-up to our previous meeting when we talked a little bit about, uh, school bus routes for next year, bus stops, what to expect. Um, so Joanna, and again, Peter and her staff have gone through the, um, document to provide, uh, some different kind of expectations for, for next year. So Joanna, would you mind, uh, walking us through that?
At the last meeting, there was a request to document on our website, our, um, little more information about, uh, the bus routes and the bus stops. So I tried to, uh, take what I wrote in my report, what we've talked about here, the questions we get on the phone, um, and put it in a couple pages and have it be a little different from the flyer about registering, but still highlight some of the key points from the flyer in case, um, people don't, um, have the opportunity to click on both. Also got, uh, received input from Dr. Lang and other people who have touched the bus routes and stops. And, uh, we tried to, um, hit on all the topics. So the top part of the form talks, uh, just a little recap about, um, registering and fee and no fee and how to do that. The next part highlights our priorities are safety, efficiency, and capacity. And that's what's driving how we set the routes and the stops. The next section kind of recaps about, um, our number of buses, that they make three runs. Um, start with high school, go to the middle school, then to the elementary. And because they make three runs, the timing is, uh, very important. And that's why we try to do efficient routes and bus stops where there's small groups of children altogether. Um, therefore, the bus doesn't need to stop, um, as many times on the route. And the recap also talks about, um, about how much time the children spend on the bus. Uh, we try to keep it under thirty minutes. Uh, we talk about not, um, going down. Uh, we try to keep it under thirty minutes. Uh, we talk about not, um, going down, um, cul-de-sacs where the bus needs to make, would need to back up or make a three-point turn with the children on board. Talks more about safety and, uh, why we have the bus stops at cross streets. We also talk about the buses, uh, making trial runs before the school year starts and getting feedback from the bus drivers on, um, any recommended changes. The second page talks about, um, the high school students. Again, remember, they start pretty early and we try not to start a bus run before six thirty in the morning. And the average time is twenty-four minutes. And the average, um, distance from home to the bus stop for high school students is point one five of a mile. Again, that's an average. Middle school, again, we try to have the bus stop at the cross street. Average distance from the home to the bus stop for a middle school student is point one zero of a mile. And average time there on the bus is twenty-four minutes. And then the elementary, uh, very similar, uh, little less. Average distance from the bus stop to home is point zero nine of a mile. And there on the bus for an average twenty-six minutes. Again, these are averages for this year and we'll try to, um, maintain that for next year. And then we talk a little bit about, um, we understand people would really like the bus stop in front of their house. But we just, um, you know, can't, we just have way too many, um, stops. And then that would really slow down the time on the bus and then children would be late for school. We talk about, the next section talks about how we use the data from registration to create the route and the stop. While the bus stop may, and the bus route may be very similar to this year, if a child, uh, leaves, you know, and their bus stop was in front of their house, we're not gonna have it be there anymore. Or, so we do, it's not going to be exactly the same. Talks about the bus passes. And this again is a kind of a repeat of what's on the flyer. You'll get your bus pass in the mail before school. Starts in August and it'll have your bus number, your pickup and drop off stop and time. And then it emphasizes to please register before July thirty-first because this is the data we'll use to create the routes and the stops. And then, um, we will change our add bus stops, uh, later in, after mid-September, um, once we have all of the registration information in. And we'll review it ongoing throughout the year as we get feedback from, uh, the families and the bus drivers and as things change.
Thank you very much. I think this is fantastic.
Where is, is this gonna be posted on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
But we, you're the first to see it?
Okay.
I I have one concern and it's on on language. And, um, so when you put safety, and this is me as an attorney, okay? So, um, I'm going to request that, I don't know if this is based on any other district's policy that's up or anything else. But for example, you you base it on several factors. This is, the data collected from the bus registration is based on several factors. You outline the factors. And then next to safety, we analyze the busy streets and we determine, uh, what is the safest location for each bus stop. I I, we're setting a policy there on how we determine what our decision is. Just, I would run that by council just to make sure because we're making a determination on safety. And if we receive input from the users of the system, that maybe something is not as safe as it as it should be. What is then our requirement to go and investigate further and so on? And have we, uh, been negligent in any way or not assessing whether something is safe or or not safe? I would just consider that language more carefully there, um, and just have it reviewed by someone before you put it up. Just that. I'm thinking like an attorney here. I really am. Because we have policies and we determine certain policies. We're basing this on policies that we have. And we are being very specific here on what our factors are. And we've defined our factor, okay, to make that determination.
Do you know?
Determination of of safety is done in consultation with the police and everything else and, right?
But that does, is not stated here in any way. It's, we make that determination period. So there's much that goes behind that, that goes on behind that in determining what the safety is. It is not just that. It, there's more than that we do. Um, okay? I I just think, just consider that carefully. Otherwise, I think this is excellent. I think this really sets out, all the things we talked about the last time, it it put, sets forth what what you do, what the process is, why you're requiring the data, all of those things. But that is a particular determinant, that we would be assessing. And, um, it's part of our policies that we, safety first for the student. And and so if if somebody disagrees with us on whether something is or is not safe, we've set forth here that once we determine what the location is, we've made a determination that that is the safest location. We don't say what we've used in order to determine what the safest location is and so on. Maybe you did ask the police department to go out and also evaluate it. Maybe you looked at data points in the town that say that that location is or is not safe and so on, many things.
Yeah, I get what you're saying. It's, it basically comes down to, it's the district's determination about designation of bus stops. We obviously take into consideration information from whoever may wanna, um, provide it. But ultimately, we have to make the determination for where the the bus stop will be. There's not like an overarching, you know, like an appeals board or something like that to go to. I I think we're just trying to stress that, you know, we certainly try to keep kids as safe as possible when we're making up these. You could have an accident on a side street and someone could say, that's not safe. Um, I mean, would you preference me to take out safety? I don't know.
Um, it's not that you, I think safety should be a concern and it should be a factor. There's no question. But it's essentially saying that we analyze everything and we determine that that is going to be the safest location for the bus stop.
Do you prefer the word we not be in there and just say factors such as the busyness of the street are considered in terms of setting up bus stops? Is that?
You might wanna make it a lot.
Yeah, but it's still us.
Right, but we'll just take.
You wanna make this a bit more general.
Factors such as, just always a we, uh.
If you're always gonna have someone then saying, you don't wanna have another party saying, well, I feel this is the, a safety issue. Or, um.
You could. You could have five parents write into you and tell you that this is not a particularly safe spot. But yet we have determined that it is. And then if something happens at that spot, that's gonna be.
That's what always happens.
Okay.
And that's why I said, I mean, we could make a determination that the stop at the the end of a quiet side street is is appropriate. And there could be a car accident on that side street. I mean, there's, there's nothing to, um, to gauge that. W- I, again, I I can take this back. We can look at that particular language.
Yeah, just look at that language. And then otherwise, I think that this is really good.
One of the things that I noticed is we have a a pretty substantial section in the parent-student handbook, um, on, um, transportation. And this might be great to include in that, uh, next year for next year's handbook.
Yeah, we haven't printed the handbook yet. That'll come in the summertime. So we could, um, we could look to put it there or even like an appendix to the handbook.
Yeah, uh, yeah, 'cause I know, yeah, there's quite a bit of information in there. Um, and the other thing I want to mention too is on, uh, June twelfth, at the senior center, there's going to be a, uh, traffic hearing to talk about traffic across the town because it's a concern.
Okay.
And, um, I thought it might be, um, it might be a good idea, uh, for, uh, one or some of us to go to that to hear. Because I think this is, you know, we're talking about safety. That's a, that's a big concern, right? Obviously, we wanna make sure that the, uh, the bus routes are in the, uh, most safe places, you know, for kids. But we're, we're bumping up against so many other things, um, where, you know, we can have kids on the bus for a very long time just because they're sitting in traffic trying to get through the center. And that these are some of the things that we have to take into account when we're planning the bus route. So it might be good to hear what people have to say or what some of the concerns are townwide with regards to traffic.
Who's hosting that?
Um, I don't, you know, I really don't know who's hosting it.
Selectmen, isn't it?
I think it's a.
Selectmen. I think it's selectmen.
Hosting the traffic, um.
Yes, uh, on the twelfth of June.
Yeah, I think it's selectmen, yes. Select Board is hosting.
Yes, the Select Board. Thank you. We're working on a charter change apparently.
I don't know, you know, because I, I think it's just, as I said, this is, this is what we're up against right now, you know, in in Chelmsford is, the traffic is incredible.
Do you mind me asking, is there a particular focus on that? Is it? No, no, no. Just to get information, I think it'd be helpful, yeah.
Hey, Emily Antle, Select Board, two B. But, uh, so, uh, seven P M. on June twelfth, there will be a forum in the senior center. And, um, the goal is to have members of the public, uh, give input on neighborhoods. And I think what we actually need to do is, is see if we can't get town meeting reps to do a little outreach and do a little, little bit of extra just because otherwise we're gonna have, I think it would make it more streamlined. I'm not sure how to, how to go about organizing that, but, um, they're working on it. I know Mike McCall is, uh, is spearheading that. So, um, there should be something. Seven o'clock on June twelfth in the senior center, uh, in North Chelmsford. And, um.
Purpose is what? Just to get?
Yeah, and so, you know.
The purpose is to get input so so that you can have the people who are like, listen, there are three accidents every year at this one corner at the bottom of my street because it's crazy. Or, you know, we've seen an increase in traffic over the years. Or, you know, there are a couple of folks who are agitating for a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit throughout town because they feel like that would make it a little safer, safer. So I think that if you're, I think it would be good to have somebody representing the school board there listening, so.
And there's some crazy places that traffic becomes very congested because what we're seeing is, is as the the main, you know, uh, through ways have become more crowded, they're using the neighborhoods as cut-throughs. Um, so it just might be worth, uh, you know, hearing what, you know, some of the issues are out there for us.
I don't have anything that night, so.
Some of that is, uh, is blamed on Waze and, uh, Google Maps where they're telling you where the traffic is and how to avoid the traffic. And so people are cutting through neighborhoods, so.
Thank you.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, right. How are we doing with enrollments so far?
So far, four hundred and fifty-three students have registered to ride the bus next year.
Fantastic.
For asking.
Did you want them to do it early or something? I'm not sure.
That'd be helpful.
Great. Is, how's that compared to last year? Is it?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
It's only been a week too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, thank you. We'll, uh, we'll get that reviewed and then eventually, once it's reviewed, we'll get that, um, advertised up on the, up on the site. Now, I'm just a couple of quick updates for you on some ongoing projects in the district. Two, uh, parking lots, we've talked about this a little bit differently. Um, Center and Harrington are both li- both going to get, uh, parking lot expansions this, um, coming summer. If you recall, we tried to do this last year. We had some money left from the modular classroom construction project. We put the project out to bid, uh, but the total bid amount came in higher than we had for the allocation. So we had to go to town meeting, uh, to get funding for fiscal twenty to basically be able to do the Harrington lot. We had enough money to do the Center lot. Um, so those contracts did go out to bid. Um, we had a number of different bidders. The low bidder on the project, um, was recommended to the Board of, uh, the Select Board last evening. Um, Emily, was that approved? I assume?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, it was.
Okay, so that was approved last evening. And, uh, so those are set. So this is within project budget. After school gets out on June twelfth, uh, they'll stop their work and it's anticipated they should be done by early August. So, uh, both schools will be coming back with, uh, with new parking lots, additional spaces. I think it's gonna go a long way at both schools. I know that, uh, Harrington in particular has to rework some of their evacuation plans. They've already had meetings with the, um, the police and fire about that. Center not so much. They're just getting really some additional spots up near the front. It doesn't impact their evacuation plans. But, um, that's a welcome, uh, welcome of both fronts.
How many extra spots will?
I don't know. I've talked my head. Uh, I did know, I saw the the plan. I honestly don't recall. At the Harrington, it's almost doubling what they have. That whole front, now there's a row of cars in front. They're basically creating another row. They're gonna cut into the island. So it's almost doubling that front. I've gotta guess it's gonna be at least thirty to thirty-five spots. At, um, Center, I think it's slightly less. It might be twenty-five to thirty. That front island is basically being cut out and is gonna be head-to-head parking on both sides. So, um, I'm gonna guess twenty-five to thirty, but I can email you tomorrow with the, uh, with the actual number. I'll ju- I could just look at the plan.
As you're doing that improvement at Harrington.
Yeah.
Just look at the lighting in the front. At night, that is the pitch's darkest area I have ever seen. I I.
No, it's pitch black. Like, I I agree with you.
It's pitch black. It's dangerous actually.
Pitch black.
Yes.
In the front there.
In the front of the school.
One of the safety lights could be burnt out.
Yeah.
Something needs to be put in there. Um, you know, we were coming out of the P T O meeting, uh, at that school and it was just, you had to ki- kinda keep an eye on each other on what was going on.
I will look. Um, parking lot, we've been, um, uh, just a really quick update. We've been waiting to get the final striping done in the back parking lot. At this point, uh, weather and, uh, temperatures didn't cooperate with us. Uh, we're just gonna wait until the summer, uh, three weeks of school left. So by the time the kids come back in the summertime, that will be, uh, striped. The bulk of it, where the kids park, was striped, but right out in front of the pack and right out in front of the athletic area wasn't yet. So that'll get done this summer.
Is the park all done? Did they do, get?
They have to do a fire lane, I believe, at, um.
Okay.
At Park of the, the front, fire lane of the school.
There's not enough parking at high school. Last night, I don't know what was going on at the pack, but I went to the lacrosse game and you lit, there was literally not a space at anywhere. And so, well, we knew it was gonna be a problem, to be honest with you because there are two major facilities in the same area. But it's just something to be aware. And the other thing, are there gonna be lights where those black buckets are?
On the islands?
Yeah.
Yeah, Gary's working on that.
They're deep, you know. Have you looked in those?
Maybe we're not talking about the same things. The.
No, they're, they're plastic circle things. And I figured they're gonna be lights, but you look down in them, they go down in the ground about four feet.
Oh.
Which is, I'm surprised somebody hasn't fooled around with them, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, we're working with with the town on that. They're gonna add some lighting. We're gonna pay a portion. They're gonna pay a portion. And then there's a rebate involved.
Quite a few. I mean.
Yeah, I thought they had already poured some of the bases.
They may have, but it's way down.
Okay. Well, they had pre-run all the, before they paved. They pre-run all the wiring underground, um, to certain spots where they were gonna add a lighting in the future so that you didn't have to go dig up. So that was done. We're just, we're gonna finalize hopefully this summer as well and add like light poles to get some light there. I do know parking, I mean, it's, it's tough when there are certain events. I don't know what was going on last night, though.
Uh, it was, I think it was me and McCarthy Band or something.
Yeah.
I think there was something on Facebook about.
Oh, last night, yes, there was a band concert. And it had, um.
Lacrosse game, to be perfectly honest, isn't a big crowd. And and found a place. But you, you, it was the kind of thing where you have to sit, if you think somebody's leaving, you sit and wait to see if you can get in.
It's like being at the mall at the holidays.
Yeah. So anyway, I just thought I'd mention it. We can put it out front where I told you you could put it in the park.
Yeah, true.
It was an original composition to Mr. Gallagher's.
Yeah, they were just, the dog.
That's what happened last night.
Um, and then last, just information for you. Uh, this had come up at our, um, recent community forum. The, uh, Project Interface Referral Service. Um, and this is something that the, I gave you just a copy of the contract as a little bit of background information. And then, uh, Sue Rosa, the, um, Public Health Nurse Director, sends us over reports when they get them from Project Interface, just on some of the statistics about who's, you know, who's accessing the service and what the different service requirements are. So I thought it'd be helpful to you. Um, Maria, you'd actually mentioned possibly on our website having some kind of like a little link. We're gonna look to see how we can do that and link people to the service. Um, but it actually really, it is being used. I think it's a great service. And, um, just wanted to provide that a little bit to you. We end up, um, kicking in about forty-five hundred dollars per year for the, for the service. The town, uh, pays forty-five and then the Board of Health as well. So it's about a thirteen. The town pays forty-five, and then the Board of Health as well. So it's about a thirteen thousand dollar contract for the year. But you can see from the data, we're getting good use and, um, very positive feedback from the people who utilize the service.
They did a nice presentation at one of the CPAC meetings.
Oh, did they?
Mm-hmm.
And also the data suggesting that our population does use it. So, the school population, I, I think that was very obvious here.
And this is something we've had since 2011? Never even heard about until we got the form.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, the data goes back to 2011, that's why I didn't, I asked.
I think it's really important to put it out.
Yeah? First time I heard of it, so. All right. Any questions on the updates? Great. Next item I asked Superintendent to put on to our agenda, just to kind of see if people have any thoughts. I know last year, over the summer, we did have MASC come in to do a workshop. At that point, we're just to kind of work on our, our collaboration, our teamwork as a, as a group. And I thought it was, it was, it was a good experience, a great presenter, and I think those of us that attended got a lot out of that, so. I didn't know if people would be interested in having something like that again this year, this summer. So what I did, I went on to MASC and just, just copied off some of the possible workshops that we could have them come in and do. Superintendent also mentioned a district governance program, which is kind of a, a larger program where they come in and do a series of workshops. Just in the basic operations of, of the school committee. So i, if you wanna take a look at, you know, these options, and then maybe we'll have a discussion at the next meeting, and then if there seemed to be some consensus, we can contact our field rep who is now.
Dorothy Presser.
Dorothy Presser, who is, who did our presentation. She's excellent.
She's very good.
Uh, or if you have some other ideas that you would like, in terms of, of some things that we can do over summer. I mean, it's summer is, is our slow season, which is nice, but, you know, if we can get some other things accomplished, that'd be, be great, so.
She did roles and responsibilities last time she was here, right?
Correct.
Yes, basically, yeah, yeah.
It was like a two or three-part series. I think we only did like one, one and a half.
Right.
So, um, there's even a little extra piece of that.
So, do you want us to reach back to you?
Well, you know, just take a look at it, and then, you know, we'll have a discussion maybe at the next meeting and, and see if we can reach consensus, and then we'll.
Is there anything you want me to email out to the members, or?
No, I gave everybody a copy.
Give it a look.
Yeah, so we'll be good. Okay, all right.
Next item for me, eleven. Just sharing with you a copy electronically of the Valley Collaborative Spring Newsletter. As you recall, there are a number of districts that are partner districts of Valley Collaborative. We're one of them. We have a significant number of students that we have involved in Valley programming. Chris Scott is the executive director and does a nice job with, with the various programs. They put out twice a year little updates on the different programming and some of the student successes and different projects that we're working on. And again, she shares that with me. I'm the, the board representative, and I just wanted to share that with you, just so you can get a sense for some of the programming that's happening in Valley.
All right.
And I, so no, no issues on that? No, you were expecting one and it didn't come through, so you have, no field trips.
That's good. All right, uh, let's see. Where are we at? Uh, anybody have any liaison reports?
Um, I have a couple.
Yeah.
Uh, just mostly dates. South Row's PTO meeting will be meeting on June 7th at nine fifteen in the morning at South Row. Chelmsford Friends of Music will be meeting at the library at six thirty on the May 23rd. They'll be meeting downstairs, actually, in the conference room. And CPAC will be meeting at the Chelmsford Learning Commons at seven o'clock on May 23rd as well. And then the only update is, is we attended the rally last week. Superintendent, myself, and Rob Russo, Ben Cole, Katie Lanewett, and Donna O'Mobono. And we had a chance to meet with Tom Golden for quite a while, actually. He spoke with us about some of the funding issues. Obviously, they've been ongoing for Chelmsford. And also how Chapter 70 relates to the Promise Act. And we met with Emily Audgers from Tammy Gueva's office as well. So it was, it was a productive day. It was a lot of activity down there. Really great representation from across the state, you know, regarding in particular the Promise Act. But we had a chance to talk to him a little bit about some of the frustrations that Chelmsford faces around Chapter 70 funding and, what can we do about it, and then some of the other ideas that we have to maybe generate a little extra revenue or funding for Chelmsford through other means.
All right, anybody else?
Several meetings. So I went to the McCarthy PTO meeting. They just had their idol, which was really, some of the talent was immense that I saw there. And Mr. Sullivan, Ms. Hill, Ms. Sweeney, Ms. Courtney, they all get together to help with that. It's a PTO presented program, but the teachers really get involved in the eighth grade level, those four teachers. The Harrington PTO, they have their fourth grade activities going on, and they're gonna have a collaboration or one of those color burst type of programs going on. It's going to be their biggest fundraiser, they hope, going forward, which would be terrific.
I think it's called a color run. I'm not totally familiar.
I think so.
It's some kind of like a race, and I don't know how the.
They ran through a color mist, right?
Yeah, they, they, and they just, yeah, that's it.
Somebody ran one here a few years ago.
Yep. Fun way to do a race.
Okay.
Okay.
They're very excited about it. I was, it was wonderful to see the number of parents involved in their fourth grade activities. Their elections are coming up at the next PTO meeting, and the same thing for McCarthy. The Council of Schools, I transitioned, or we transitioned, so they now have Emily and Beth, who are also the co-presidents of the South Row School as the president, and they have their board continuing on. They gave out their two scholarships, and it was just wonderful. One student wrote about three teachers. It was really impacted her life. And, and another one about another teacher, and it, it, the essays were super. The Development Council, I went again for my second meeting. I'm enjoying this council, actually. And we talked about the fact that the master plan is now under review, and what the role of the Development Council is going to be there. There was a report done, a study done. I'm reading through that study now to see where the schools fall into place here in that study, but, and I'll update you if I see anything. And, and that was it.
Al, do you have anything? You said, you had a rotary?
Oh, duck race, it was a sunny day and went well, and.
None of the ducks.
None of us won, Al.
I know.
None of us won.
None of our ducks won.
Yeah.
Sorry. I have no control over the ducks. No, we're, the big thing right now, we have the maximum number that you can send going to Ryla and kids in leadership positions, so the big thing, one of the big things we're pushing right now is to get volunteers. They've reduced the size of the different sections, so there are ninety sections, and just to cover for safety, we require, it's required that you have at least two adults in each of those, no mind the person running it. So it's a lot of people. So, um, I'm really pushing particularly the new people. We have a new corporate member, the first one, Dolan's Funeral Home, which is huge, and I think that might cause some other people to step forward and do that. That would help kind of stabilize funding and things. But, um, things are good.
I forgot one, Don, so I'm, I'm gonna say it. It's EL Council. Running, the pop lock happens on Thursday night this week, and they did it last year as a group. All of the teachers get together in that group and run this for the parents. It's from six to seven thirty at the McCarthy Cafeteria. Looking forward to seeing that.
I just want to mention that Al, Donna, and I went to the Alumni Awards Scholarship Presentation, and they presented what I, I wrote them down. A hundred and thirteen students received about fifty-five thousand dollars during that night, so it was a nice little presentation. The superintendent, assistant superintendent presented awards, so they, they do a very nice job. A lot of students get a lot of recognition in it, in that program, so that was nice to go. And then Center School has their PTO on the 11th, which is Tuesday. All right.
You brought, mentioned the alumni, the Alumni Golf Tournament's Thursday, and I'm sure that someone still would like to get involved. They'd be glad to have them. And there're gonna be some stag golfers there this year.
Some, some ringers. I heard, I heard some ringers ago, but, yeah.
I just have two things to mention.
Oh, yeah.
One, tonight is the Town of Chelmsford Scholarship Night, so we just want to acknowledge that that's happening for our students, and I just want to announce that Lowell won the Knowledge Bowl. I'll just leave it at that.
Congratulations.
All right, any, any new items? Any action items?
Can we combine action items with public comments? I'm gonna have Emily help me out with this.
I thought you were gonna get up and run around.
Well, just the one, I wrote down with Bill coming back with the rest of the upgrades in technology.
Oh, yes.
What is it?
Uh, Bill providing like a report on just the regular operating budget.
Okay.
And what it's gonna support technology-wise.
Okay.
And I just had a question, because Dan Hat had been here about the signs. Has, has anything happened with that? It was on Facebook once, and that's all I saw.
I did see a little burst on Facebook. I'll follow up with him on that as well.
He may be holding off to build, you know, for the, for the fall, I don't know.
Yeah, no, but I'll ask him anyway, because I know, no, I do know he was setting to push for it. I think it's unlikely that they're gonna get too much signage at this point. I think we're gonna put a push on over the summer to try to have some signs in place for like, say, the fall sports that use the fields.
Yeah.
But I'll find out with him what's going on.
The other thing is, you need to hit organizations.
Right.
All right, any public comments slash?
No, just, I just wanted to recognize that Emily was here, and that they had passed our proclamation last night. Okay, for the LGBTQ, June would be the month recognizing this, and that maybe one of the things that we would consider in our next meeting is how we can support the Board of Selectmen in their proclamation.
I think one of the, one of the reasons for pushing for this was to support the kids.
Yeah, and to support, yes, to support the kids, yes.
I mean, like, the, the whole impetus was that, you know, Chelmsford hasn't set aside a Pride Month and hasn't honored Pride Month in the past, and I, I know, I know McCarthy, I know Kurt Mc, Kurt McPhee at McCarthy has done this, this wonderful group, and they got to speak earlier this year, I think.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, it was earlier. I was trying to remember whether it was last spring or, or this fall.
Oh, this year.
But, uh, yeah, it was this year, and I, I mean, I just, I just need the kids to know that, that, you know, there are adults out there fighting for them, and that we value them, and we love them, and we want them to grow up big and strong, so. I just, I, I, it was important to me. I have a lot of LGBTQ friends, and I was disappointed last year that the Board of Selectmen doesn't have this on their normal rotation. Because I think, having heard stories in the past about issues around LGBTQ teens in town, I just, I, I thought it needed to be recognized, and, and there are friends and family and neighbors, and we need some support, so.
And I know Lorraine is, you know, especially with the social emotional learning, this seems like it would be a very relevant topic, you know, so.
And that's a huge part of it, and, and studies have shown that, that wherever you have events that uh, promote equality, um, for LGBTQ kids, it actually improves that social emotional learning across the board. It, it improves things for all the kids because they, they are more aware of differences, and they're like, hey, it's all right. Like, that, that feeling of it's okay to be myself, it spreads, and it, and it helps reduce some of these, these issues that we see for developmental reasons, for social reasons, for social media reasons. But it really, it really reduces some of that stress and bullying that you might see otherwise, so.
I just wanted to tell, Dr. Whittlesley's dissertation was completely on this topic, and she's actually been a great help and resource to help our students, so she would probably be more than willing to come up with that. I don't know if you wanted to mention, by the time my next meeting, we only have, we only have six days of school.
Yeah, oh, there's very little.
So I almost feel like by, you're gonna talk about it and our students will be gone. So perhaps maybe a conversation, like an update of what could be done, because we're not gonna be in school.
I was even thinking just, uh, you know, basically, you're right, we only have such a short amount of time, but even if there was someplace where, if parents needed resources, for example.
Oh, sure.
You know, maybe on our website, we could say, you know, that this is a place, and, and I think this is, uh, you know, a topic certainly worth being mindful of as we move forward. And I think we've talked about this, about, you know, what, what can we do to support kids? You know, who may feel marginalized in some way, for one reason or another.
I think you hit a good point, though. I think parents need a lot of help. Particularly if somebody's going, you know, I, because of the positions I've held, I've dealt with some situations where people are going through sex change and the parents were split, you know, I was invited over to their house and I didn't know why. And all of a sudden, I'm in the middle, because it was a student that I had dealt with, and you know, in this particular case, the, the father had real problems. He loved his, I'll say, son, but he couldn't, he just didn't know what to do. And, and the mother was having a tough time, and I really think, um, that's a big need. And, you know, it's not statistically, but I think it's really hard when it comes out of, it often comes out of the blue, and they're not ready.
And it has ripple effects throughout the community. That's, that's the other thing, and I think, I think that, you know, from what I hear from, from parents, students that I know are children, it's just, it's having that resource and having a school system that is aware and encouraging, welcoming, makes all the difference, because then they know where they can go, so.
The other thing that I've become really aware of is that television is, talk about diversity. Every one of the series, it's all kinds of combinations of people and marriage practices and everything else. And almost, it's almost nothing that's beyond what they're gonna put on. So people who move to small villages to avoid it, well, if they turn on the TV, they can't avoid these issues. It's, it's just constant. I, I wanna say that when parents have worked with, my experience, when parents have worked with the school, things have gone very well. We had a person that went through a sex change at a very young age, and they, and they dealt with us, and it went very smoothly. I think a lot of times when the schools left out because they don't wanna make it a big deal or whatever, it's much more difficult to, to have it go smoothly. Anyway.
Yeah, we'll follow up with Christie and Lorraine and provide you some information at the June meeting.
Great, thank you.
What we're currently doing and how we can be supportive.
All right, thanks for bringing it up.
All right.
All right, um, if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second?
All in favor?
This is my own, my own personal motion.
I figured it'd be this.
Oh, yeah.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Good meeting.